Can you hear enough?
And then Supervisor Madron can join us when he gets through. So, welcome everybody. Are you okay, Ryan? Okay, I'm sure he is. So, welcome everybody.
Yes, we're good to go.
Thank you. To Humboldt County's first ever virtual meeting of the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors. It is Tuesday, April 14th, 2020. And I'd like to begin by just reading out a few things for people who are joining us either on the internet or on TV. The way public comment is going to go is this, when we announce an agenda item that you wish to comment on, you can call the conference line. Yes, you want me to do the salute first? Okay. Supervisor Bone is trying to help me with running the meeting here. So, I'm going to say in in recognition of the fact that we're zooming, we can salute the flag. It looks like Supervisor Bone would like to do it. So, I'm going to go ahead and lead it. I've got a flag behind me here, and Supervisor Bone has one in front of his camera. So, I'm going to lead you in this. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. We'll get a lot better at that, I'm sure. Thank you for that inspiration, Supervisor Bone. So, again, I'll go back to the Zoom participation. So, if you, when an agenda item is announced, you can call the conference line and turn off your TV or live stream. The number to call is 346-248-7799. That's 346-248-7799. And you can enter the meeting ID. So, that is 829-339-668. 829-339-668. And then you press star nine on the phone. This will raise your hand. You'll continue to hear the meeting. And when it's time for public comment, you'll hear a little sound, and that will mean that you're muted. Or you're unmuted, I should say. So, we've already, hi Rex, we've already saluted the flag. Thank you very much. And I'd like to ask CEO Amy Nielsen if there are any modifications to the agenda.
There are no modifications to the agenda.
Thank you, CEO Nielsen. And that will bring us to the consent calendar. I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any public comment on the consent calendar?
I have no public comment, Estelle.
Thank you very much, Ryan. So, with that, any discussion at the board? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. You can give a thumbs up. Okay, aye.
Can you?
That is unanimous. From now on, when we take a vote, we'll do it by roll call. And thank you for that. So, we'll move on to our next item, which is public comment on items not on the agenda. Do we have any public comments on items not on the agenda? Again, that the process is to call that number that I read out. Do we have any public comment, Ryan?
Supervisor Chair Fennel, I'm being made aware that there's an issue with the phone number. So, we're going to have to try to work that out. So, maybe we could come back to public comment on non-agenda items.
Absolutely. In that case, the next item on the agenda is a very large one, which I don't know we can get done by 9:15. In fact, I'm sure we can't. Any suggestions, CEO Nielsen? Because both of the other items are.
Possibly H2 modifications to the board meeting schedule could probably be done somewhat quickly.
That sounds great. Thank you so much. So, we will move to item H2 modifications to the board meeting schedule for the calendar year of 2020. And CEO Nielsen?
Thank you, Chair Fennel. So, before your board today is a consideration to modify the board meeting schedule for calendar year 2020, in particular, because staff are responding to COVID-19, the emergency response, there is a recommendation to modify your board's schedule. So, there are some modifications to the April schedule, canceling the meeting of April 21st, canceling the meeting of May 12th, and then canceling the meeting of June 9th. I would just like to add one note that Director Madsen contacted me and said that there's a possibility that we may need a special meeting on May 12th because of the Potter Valley project. But we, he is working with other counties to see if they can bring their agenda items though prior to that. So, that concludes the staff report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you for that. And we will keep everybody posted on what's going on with that. I think we're all pretty familiar now. Absolutely. I see you Supervisor Bone.
Yeah, I understand the April and May. And the June meeting, I think we're going to be busier than hell in June. And canceling meetings kind of makes me a little bit nervous, because I think we're going to be, my glasses half full. So, I think we're going to be coming out of this. The talk you hear and what I feel and everything else, I think we're going to be busy as hell trying to put all the pieces back together. So, I don't know the idea of going two weeks without a meeting. It's probably the most beneficial, but you can convince me.
Any other comment on this item? Supervisor Wilson?
Yeah, I mean, I can understand where staff's coming from on this. I think if things are really busy and which I'm, I like your optimism Supervisor Bone. However, we can have special meetings for things that really need to get moving during that time too. And that allows for staff to be able to really be more nimble in terms of getting things through that need to happen. And it allows us to bring up things that are pointing it for that time. So, I'm okay with the schedule as it's currently proposed, just so long as we're understanding that there's a possibility that there may be special meetings put in different spots in order to address, you know, important issues and things that need to happen.
We can, through the chair.
Go ahead.
We can also cancel meetings under that same auspice. So, I'd rather we plan for the meeting and cancel it than rather than, okay, let's throw a special meeting together. That was just my thoughts on it. So, I mean, we've been into this thing for 35 days, 38 days, whatever. We're talking 60 days ahead. So, again.
Supervisor Beth.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'm sorry, my headset is not working. So, I hope you can hear me okay at the moment. I mean, I can see both arguments, but I'm actually thinking if we plan to keep the ones in June, if there are big items that are scheduled for then, and then we find out it really doesn't work, then we kind of throw everything else off kilter, because people are expecting to go on the agenda at a certain time. I mean, some of the projects. So, I mean, I think, you know, we'll make it work either way it goes. I, you know, I kind of defer to staff, because they have, I mean, we have a workload, but they have a, they have an ever-changing workload right now. I would hate to pin us into something and then have to backtrack and tell everybody, sorry, we can't hear your item after all. But that's just my thoughts.
Okay. Any further comment on this item? Did you want to weigh in Supervisor Madron?
I agree with both comments. So, let's go ahead with staff's recommendation.
Is there, are we in a position yet, Ryan, to receive public comment on this item? I know that we've had trouble getting that for a public comment on. Okay.
Yes, Chair Fennel, it seems that attendees will have to use the password. It seems that Zoom has changed the requirements for calling in. So, I would like to give out the password to the meeting. So, folks can join, the public could join as an attendee if that would be okay.
So, absolutely, Ryan. The question from me is, do we give out all three of the numbers?
Correct. It seems, yes, it seems at this point currently that you need all three to attend the meeting, and that is a new requirement from Zoom.
Okay. So, in that case, I'll let you read them out this time. I'll read them. I've got them right in front of me. Here we go. So, the first number is just, the number to dial is 346-248-7799. That's 346-248-7799. And then the meeting ID is 829-339-668. That's 829-339-668. And then the meeting ID is 163982. That's 163982. And for those of you following along, you can access all of these numbers except for this last one on your agenda, if you've downloaded from the web. So, with that in mind, do we have any public comment on this item? Counsel Billingsley.
Chair, I would recommend waiting just a couple of minutes so people can participate. And also, when attendees come in, I would recommend that you see if there were comments that wanted to be made on the consent calendar. Take those comments and then redo with a roll call vote, just to be on the same side.
All right. So, we'll do comments on consent, comments on this item. And since we're now bumping up against the 9:15 deadline, we will do public comments on non-agenda items after the 9:15 item. Okay. So, we'll give everybody a few minutes to dial in those numbers. And just for subjective discussion, these are interesting times in the future. I'll see if we can get those numbers actually on the screen for those viewing it on TV. And I'll repeat them again, just for the benefit of everybody. It's the initial number is 346-248-7799. And then the next number is 829-339-668. And then the meeting ID is 163982. And actually, Ryan, while we're watching the sausage being made today, I have an idea. Do you print those numbers out? Yes, go ahead. So, if you print those numbers out large and then hold them up.
Absolutely. I will do that. That's not a problem. And we do, are starting to get attendees in for public comment now.
Great. Thank you so much. So, at this point, we'll get public comment done. Supervisor Madron.
Yes, I just was curious. How do I raise my hand? I'm not seeing that on the screen. I mean, I know how to do that.
Yeah. You can do that, because you should be on all the time. Yeah.
Certainly. Okay. Is there a button for that, though?
Yes, down at the bottom, oh, see, for people who are on the Zoom call, if you're a participant, you just click on that, and that gives you the ability to then raise your hand. Or you can actually do that over here at the bottom of the screen. So, maybe Ryan can help you as well Supervisor Madron. So, Ryan, do we have a public comment on this item?
Supervisor or Chair Fennel, yes, we do have two public commenters, and I can go ahead and unmute them when you're ready.
And just for clarification, we are now commenting on the Board of Supervisors' modified agenda. So, I'll take those comments. Please identify yourself when you come on.
Hi, my name is Thomas Mulder. I just want to clarify, we're talking about the scheduling change right now. Is that clarification correct?
That is correct, Thomas.
Okay. So, my request is, I understand we're in uncertain times and meetings need to be canceled. My problem with canceling a regular meeting and then holding a special meeting the same week as the originally regularly regularly scheduled meeting is you guys are following the new COVID guidelines and not allowing for public comment of non-agenda items. So, if you're going to move forward with having a special meeting on the same week that originally a regular meeting was scheduled for, I feel that you should have the agenda item, public comment for non-agenda items, is my comment on this item. And I have two other comments, consent calendar and public comments when you allow those later on.
Right. Thank you, Thomas. I'm not sure with the technology. If you can just hold on, we will go after this vote is done back to comment on the consent calendar. So, I think you can probably stay on and then come back on when we take that vote. So, we'll move to the next public comment. Welcome.
Hello, Estelle. This is Kent Swatki.
Good morning, Kent.
You can hear, I would like to echo the Mr. Mulder's request. It's a little bit irregular to have special meetings during the same time you would normally have a regular meeting. And we feel like you're, we're not allowed to make public participation to the level we'd like to. So, I'd just like to ditto to what he just said.
Thank you. Any further public comment on this item, Ryan? I don't think there is. So, I think what we'll do is we'll now.
Chair Fennel, I don't have any more public commenters, but I do have the phone numbers here for everyone, if that works.
That is magic. That's great. So, in future, when we go to to a call for public comment, Ryan will hold that up so people can take those numbers. So, going back to the board, having had public comment, are there any thoughts on the item of the meeting agenda? Any further thoughts given that public comment? Supervisor Wilson?
Yeah, I want to say that I think that the comments from the public seem reasonable, that if during the week, when we don't have a meeting in particular, if there is a special meeting, at least if at least one of those special meetings, if there's more than one for some particular reason, that there be time made for public comment related things not on the agenda, I think. And we've been doing that as our practice for the most part anyway. Over the last some years that I've been here, I haven't seen many of our special meetings except for things that are closed session related specifically. Almost all those meetings have had a comment time for things not on the agenda. So, I think it's been our standard practice. If we just keep going with that, I'm all right.
Okay. Supervisor Beth?
Um, yeah, I was actually, I would be, either way is fine. It's like, I think, to me, while I hear what Supervisor Wilson is saying, I was actually thinking from the two folks that called in that maybe we should just keep regularly scheduled meetings.
that maybe we should just keep regularly scheduled meetings and then just decide to cancel if we need. Because we do, you know, it's like, we're one thing, we're on the, I guess you'd say, on the inside and when things are happening, we know if something's canceled or not, but the public's not going to be as. Or then, you know, we know there's a special meeting. I'm just thinking maybe we should just take it and guess through May and then see what happens in June. I guess I'm saying I'm agreeing with Supervisor Bone now.
Okay. So with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Well, I'm gonna just keep moving forward with staff recommendations with the schedule proposed, with the modification. If we have a special meeting in a week that we don't have a regular meeting, that there be time made for public comment on things not on the agenda. That's my motion.
We have a second on that? No second on that. So I'll entertain another motion.
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we just go ahead with staff's recommendation for May, April and May, and then let's take a look at June. I'm not, I just think we're going to be so overloaded with work. And I think we're going to be seven days a week trying to put back what this COVID has torn apart. And I mean, I'll do by all decisions, but I know you guys won't like that. So we better have meetings.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And any further discussion? I don't think we need to. I'll just say, I echo. I echo what you have to say Supervisor Bone. I think that, you know, we'll be hearing from Dr. Frankovich very shortly. And I know that it is very tempting to think that things will have all smoothed it out in a couple of months, but we're in uncharted waters, but let's, we will have an opportunity between now and June to make a change, should we have to do so.
Through the chair clarification, I just want you to know, I'm taking, basically taking two thirds of staff's recommendation. And I, and I, and I really appreciate everything Dr. Frankovich has said. But Dr. Frankovich is a doctor and our public nurse. She is not, she's not a mind reader. She doesn't have a silver, you know, she doesn't have a crystal ball. Nobody knows what next week is going to bring. We've had six days of zeros. We may have six days of tens now. We don't know what's going on. So to plan out over 60 days ahead, I just think is, is I think we're better than that. So I just, and I have to have optimism. That's just it. If I don't have optimism, I don't have anything.
That's great. Well, thank goodness for Zoom. I'll say that much because we can make our meetings happen. And this is our first virtual one, as we mentioned earlier. Everybody's doing really well. And with that, I'd like to call on Ryan for a roll call and a vote.
Okay, so roll call vote Supervisor Fennel?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
That's a yes.
Thank you very much. So with that, we'll move forward. And you did get the the motion, I'm assuming. Ryan?
Yes, Chair Fennel. Approved staff recommendations for the April and May schedule only.
Thank you. Perfect. So with that, we'll go back to the consent calendar to see if there's any public comment on the consent calendar. And again, Ryan will hold up those numbers just in case you haven't gotten them already. But since you're not showing up yet, I'll just say once again, those numbers are 346-248-7799. The meeting ID is 829-339-668. The password, if I can reach it, is 163-982. And then you press star nine on your phone and that will get you into the line for public comment. So Ryan, do we have any public comment on the consent agenda?
Yes, Chair Fennel, we do.
Thank you. Go ahead with public comment.
Hello, Thomas Mulder again. First commenting on item eight, you guys did not, I emailed all of you and you guys did not take note. In my opinion, there was a Brown Act violation when that meeting took place under the CAO update. I asked for further on staff reports to cover that issue. So I want to make note and bring light that I feel the prompting of the questions that took place when the tax assessor especially was at the dais. It definitely got off topic of how his staffing was going to be related to COVID-19. So I want that to be noted. And item number nine, no public comments. I submitted written public comments. So I'm going to read that into the record. Good morning. I know things are wild within the county currently, but I have slept on this after watching this agenda item on the video yesterday. I followed the process as posted on the agenda, how to submit public comments and forwarded them the day before to ensure they were in early enough. Please note the time, the date and email address originally sent this email to. I've been told, although I have seen the forwarded message, that I'm not the only one that did not have their public comment read. And I said, thank you for finally having the discussion item properly agendized. I support the idea of the county waiving all late fees and property taxes for up to one week after property tax collection. Offices back open to accept cash payments. As you're aware, many individuals paying cash need the offices to be open to pay their bill. I disagree with the tax collector's emails he sent me that they can use credit cards, check or money orders, all those forms burden the taxpayer with additional costs. The taxpayers shouldn't have to write a letter and have the decision to waive fees at the discretion of the tax collector. The board should support taxpayers and waive late fees at least one week from the tax collection office open. Also, I appreciate the board members that responded to my concerns regarding this issue. It's unfortunate my own district supervisor didn't respond to me. I know these are trying times and financially it's affecting a lot of people, including the county. But I feel waiving these fees will help support the community tremendously. Thank you, Thomas Mulder.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment on this item? Okay.
Estelle, this is Kent Swatsky. Estelle, this is Kent Swatsky. I'd like to echo again what Mr. Mulder said on his last comments in its entirety. I also wish to speak on item C13. This is an item in which the Board of Supervisors from Human Resources is amending an agreement with Leibert Cassidy and Whitmore. This is a company that is a legal firm. And yet, when I went to the original agreement and this agreement, there was no sign that County Council had reviewed this agreement. It was approved as to risk. But I don't think County Council has approved this as far as content. I would hope not. Because under section five of this, it says direction control. Attorney's work under this agreement shall be directed and controlled by County's authorized legal representative, the Hubble County Office of County Council in conjunction with Human Resources Director, who is risk or is associated with risk. But it just bothers me. And then, of course, I find errors in the statement. The prior one here should have been corrected when you amended this. Said monthly statements will be mailed to Office of County Council Attention Blair Angus Assistant County Council at the room there. And yet, you didn't amend that part. So it just appears to me that you're not crossing your Ts, dotting your Is. And it also bothers me that you are using an outside counsel for a purpose that our prior HR director used to fulfill. And I think, I think your current interim county counsel, Mr. Billingsley, in my opinion, and some other staff members are totally capable of doing this in-house. Why are we spending these large sums of money for outside counsel when we should be able to accomplish this within our existing budget? So those are some of my concerns on this. All of these contracts should be reviewed, anything especially with a legal firm and signed off by County Council. I see no evidence that's been done. Thank you for my comment on this topic.
Thank you, Mr. Swatsky. Any further public comment in the consent agenda?
There is no more public comment on the consent.
Thank you very much, Ryan. So I just want you, everyone to note that we are limited to three minutes and everybody's been very good about staying it in that three minute. I do have a timer right here. So I did want to say just a little clarification because I've heard from people about the ability to comment on that meeting that was referenced by one of the commenters. And what had happened, and you know, we're all in flux right now. And I would just like to say, what happened is that for our very first meeting that we used Zoom for, it was actually, as I recall, a town hall. And so we were allowing people to send in emails and then the clerk of the board would read those out. But when it got to an actual meeting of the Board of Supervisors, we treated emails as we have treated emails in the past. If we get an email, the Board of Supervisors gets them, forwarded to them and we get to read them and make them part of ours and operations. Or if they make any, if they're, you know, we take their input. That is the way we're moving forward. Emails are emails. Public comments will be taken just as we're doing it today. So please give us a little slack here. We're all navigating different waters. But hopefully we have gotten a lot more polished as time goes on. And hopefully we don't have to do it for a very, very long time. But we do have to do it for a couple of months probably at least. So with that, thank you very much for everyone and their comments. And we'll now go to a roll call on the consent calendar. Ryan?
Thank you, Chair Fennel. We'll take a roll call vote for the consent calendar. And again, that was Supervisor Wilson and Supervisor Bass with the motion and the second to approve staff recommendation. I will go to Chair Fennel.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson? Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone? Five oh.
And in case you didn't hear me, yes.
Yeah, I think that that's an important distinction you just made Supervisor Wilson. Some people are just listening. So it would be good to have the voice. Thank you very much. Now we're going to go to our time set and I want to apologize to Dr. Frankovich and Director Neil Stevens for delaying your, and the sheriff, and Ryan Turby for this bit of delay, but I hope you bear with us. And now the floor is yours. And thank you so much again for all the work that you're doing. It is pretty amazing how things are going so far in Humboldt. So welcome Dr. Frankfitch and Director Stevens, Sheriff Hansel. The floor is yours.
Thanks, Chair Fennel. So I did want to just mention, and I neglected to do so, I think on our last, that it was Public Health Week, National Public Health Week last week. And I did just want to take a second to basically note that in my lifetime, I don't think in any of our lifetimes, we've faced a challenge like COVID. And I want to point out, it's an amazing public health workforce in Humboldt County that are very mission-driven and tireless in this. So I'm very thankful for them. Just an update for COVID. I'm sure people are kind of watching the numbers worldwide. We have about 2 million cases and over 120,000 deaths. In California, about 24,000 cases, 714 deaths. And in Humboldt, we remain at 50. We've come a long way in a really short time. And I was just on a call this morning. You know, some of the big topics that come up around COVID right now, of course, are still testing with the severe shortage in supplies for testing, you know, throughout much of the country, including California. I'm sure you're aware Governor Newsom announced sort of a task force on testing with a public-private partnership. And really understanding that as we talk about potentially easing shelter-in-place type of orders, that we need as an underpinning of that to have robust testing in place. Because we will be, need to be able to do the kind of surveillance and rapid turnaround testing that's going to be needed in the setting of opening up any interaction at the community level. So we appreciate that. I know his goal is by the end of April to have testing increased about fivefold to 25,000 tests a day capacity in California. And again, I think that's seen by both private company, university labs, those types of things to help to increase capacity throughout the state. Obviously, the shelter in place is a big issue. We all understand what a sacrifice this is for everyone in our county. And no one wants this to last for longer than necessary. I do want people to understand there's lots of planning going on around this issue, the preconditions that would be needed to be able to move forward with this. Of course, we operate right now under the governor's order as well as our own local order. But it's going to, again, require a lot of informed thoughtful planning because we need to be able to not only understand all the pieces that need to be in place to begin to loosen this, but all of the pieces in terms of how do we protect our most vulnerable populations while allowing some increased movement in general in our local activity and economy. So I will be keeping you apprised of developments on that end as well. One of the important pieces of this now, and it will be going forward if we do move into more of an easing situation, is in addition to testing, having robust capacity for contact, investigations, isolation quarantine, so that as we do increase any numbers of cases in our community that we're able to isolate and quarantine to slow transmission. So that is another piece that we've been building internally in public health and including even investigators from law enforcement, other folks, just so that we can get a rapid response to new cases. And I believe that's all I was going to mention off top and we certainly can answer questions.
Any questions at this point for Dr. Frankfitch? Or will we go ahead and listen to Director Stevens first? Okay, let's hear from Director Stevens from the perspective of the Department of Health and Human Services.
Hi, good morning. I also wanted to just thank you for the proclamation today around National Public Health Week last week. You know, we do that proclamation every year. And, you know, these are unprecedented times for us. And I just want to thank the rest of the public health sectors that are involved in all public health work in the public health system. That's law enforcement, education, businesses, service agencies, of course, and of course, the general public. We've all been making great sacrifices. And together, if we just continue to do that work together, I think we'll get through this just fine. As far as, yes, or last time I shared just an update on how we're doing with serving those that are experiencing homelessness. And so, you know, we've implemented that for probably the last week and a half now in terms of getting folks secured into a hotel room. We're still working out some kinks and working with partners on identifying high-risk individuals and then doing outreach to them to engage them into their interest in having a room in order to prevent exposure or continued exposure. So I'm still working on that. And I guess, I don't know if there's any specific questions folks have around that or anything else that we're doing that we're happy to answer.
That's fine. Let's do it that way. Sorry, Sheriff Hansel. Would you like to give us a quick update before I open it up to the board to have a discussion?
Sure. Good morning, Chair and Board. I appreciate the time, the opportunity to speak with you guys today. So our EOC is fully operational right now and we have approximately 80 persons that are a part of that EOC in the process of planning, a process of ordering logistical supplies for first responders and county employees and city employees. And so we are the conduit a lot of the times for these resources that are coming in. So based upon, you know, Dr. Frankovich and the state, you know, we are planning for surge still. That's our number one priority right now in our operation. And until we have numbers that say differently, that's our plan moving forward. So we are implementing several things to plan for that. We've had good meetings with local health providers and Dr. Frankovich to make sure that we are all on the same page. And so things are working in a smooth fashion right now. And so we're making some progress on a number of things. But I do want to urge people again that if they do have questions or concerns, we have a joint information center that has all the latest information. So look at our main webpage, humboldtgov.org is the clearinghouse for all current information. for all current information. We also have several social media sites. And our joint information center is is doing things very, very well and keeping this this county updated on the latest information. So also, the Board of Supervisors are being are provided information briefings three days a week. And so I think that's going well. If you guys had concerns about that, please let me know. But but we're trying to keep everyone up to date on all the information as well as, again, continue to plan. And this is not just the county that's doing this. Now, as the Director of Emergency Management, you know, we are directing this, but this is a county-wide effort. We virtually have personnel from from cities, from state agencies, and and all county agencies that are represented within the EOC. And it is working very, very smoothly. And I'm very, very proud of our team and how the county is dealing with this.
Thank you, Sheriff. So I'll go to the Board. Are there any questions or comments from the Board members on this item? Okay, everybody. So just for as we go forward with these, if you do in the future have a comment, just put your hand up. It'd be a lot easier for me to know Supervisor Bowe. Yeah?
Yeah. Dr. Frankovich, and I know we keep hearing about this, and I keep asking, but where do you think we're at? People still clamoring for more information. And I know, I mean, like, on a daily basis, I know we have the total numbers, and we make them break out their calculator and stuff. You know, how many people we test per day, you know, that the question, do we test anybody? And the math is right there. I know it's there. But are we, I know, we said we'd get more information Friday, and I don't know if I missed it. I had a hard time finding it. It says on the website. But are we gonna, should we just tell people that's all the information we're gonna get and quit asking? Or are we actually going to give them more information?
Well, I think Supervisor, we have, we are providing those daily total tests, the any positives, of course, we're reporting on there. On Fridays, we're recording our gender makeup of positive tests. We're also reporting the mean age for a positive test, and we're reporting where the bulk of our tests are, a positive test in our county. As we discussed before, we will, we are looking forward to presenting the cases in a regional basis. We just need to have a little bigger case count to do that, so that we're not identifying, for instance, a single case in an area that may be make that more easily identifiable. But we will be able to do that. We've already started some of that preliminary. Of course, the the lull in our cases over the past six days has meant that there aren't really changes in those numbers that we presented. So that's what we have. Again, we will not, I don't envision a time in which we're specifically identifying for each case, the town in which they reside, for reasons that we've discussed. But I think the regional approach will work very well.
And I, to the Chair, I think that's all people are asking for. And I know we've talked about a lot. And I know you want to hit a number. So so everybody can, you know, not hit a number. But I'm let's, you're talking about breaking the county into three regions. Is that right?
Yeah.
Just for sake of it. So you're going to have approximately 40,000 people in each region, 45,000 people. If you say there's one in Region Three, whichever Region Three is, I have no idea. You think people's going to do a Where's Waldo hunt or something? I just, I think people, and I know, I know the clarification is, is people see if they don't have anything in their region, that you think that will think they'll relax more. But I but I think when you do all three regions, I don't think people are going to relax more. I think they're going to realize, whoa, they're close. And we have it. I think the zeros, if you're trying to stop that, we better quit putting zeros up. We better not tell them anything. Just tell them it's bad. So I'm just saying, I don't, and I, and I'm not saying for myself, because I don't know what they're going to do with the information anyway. I fully agree. But I but I would bet I'm not the only person on the Board getting numerous complaints going, why are they being so secretive when you go to other counties that have a lesser count than we do? And, you know, but we always get compared to everybody else and smaller politicians, and they've got it broken down into a more precise thing. And I mean, it's just like, I know, we get the totals, you know, the five, you know, the 805 and the five, you know, we get the totals of how many tested. But we tested 51 today and had zero. I mean, have we put the totals there? We could put how many test cases too. And then I know the other question was, out of the total 1,418 tests, that's not tests that have been applied. That's tests that have been actually run through the system, right?
Yes. In the commercial lab setting, some of those tests may be pending. For the ones that we report from our lab, those are resulted.
All right. I'm just, I'm just, and this is just for, and this is throughout, this is, I'm getting calls throughout the county, not just my, not my peeps in my district that want more information. And part of the problem is, it's not that they want more information. We're telling them to shelter in place, so they don't have anything better to do. So they want, you know, I don't think they're going to go out and do a Where's Waldo. I think they just want to know if if where the where where the people are. I think it's, yeah, we obviously, most of the cases, and you're generally saying, most of the cases are going to be where most of the people live.
Right. I think on our last report.
Arcata Fortuna, Eureka, and McKinneyville. I mean, you got 75% of the county wrapped up right there. So I mean, I expect 75 to 85% of the cases to be right there.
Eighty, eighty-four percent of the cases.
People, people want to hear, 75 to 85, I found them. But I think people want to hear that. And 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 I, at least, and I have, again, I have no reason at all why they want to hear it. But it gets asked repeatedly every day why we're not doing it. So.
And again.
I'd rather just, I'd rather just say we're not going to do it than say, yeah, it's going to happen Friday, or it's going to happen this week. We're going to get more information. It doesn't happen. That's, you're doing a great job, by the way. So I just thought I'd do some more stuff.
Thanks. No, I appreciate the feedback. But I understand, people want to know. And we've gone through the reasons why it really shouldn't change anyone's behavior or where we sit. But I still understand that desire. I do intend to do the regional. Again, it won't take very many more cases for us to be able to do that in a way that's appropriate. And I would also mention that we, you know, where counties are on reporting is all over the board. And honestly, I think it's, you know, we need to to have our standard that is good public health standard and their justifications for what we're doing. And we will open that up as soon as possible. I do want to point out, one of the big questions I've gotten about is reporting on recovered cases. And again, if you notice, if you go to any site, you'll see that the recovered cases is vastly, vastly lower than the total number of positives. And it's because, again, there is no uniform definition right now for what it means to be recovered from COVID. Does that mean that you are seven days out, 14 days out? Does it mean we know you have no symptoms at all anymore? And so a lot of areas are not really trying to do much in the way of reporting on that feature until we get a definition for what that actually means. So it becomes comparable data. And so I do want to also let people know that we expect to put that information out there in a meaningful way as soon as we are able to report that in a meaningful way. So that will, that will appear as well.
One final question. As you say that, of the 50, of the 50 that we have reported, some have returned to normal life. I mean, whatever this is considered normal. So so if there's no definition, shouldn't they all be quarantined? Or, I mean, instead of saying that they're are released, I'd release from quarantine, I guess, would be the number. And because we definitely have a definition of that, because there are people that I know that were under the, you know, that had tested positive, were under the quarantine, met the 14 days without any symptoms, and they're back doing what they can do, albeit what's left to do while we're in the middle of this. So it seems to me those people, I guess you couldn't say they're recovered because they're no anything else, but they're doing a hell of a lot better than they were.
Oh, absolutely. And.
We have, they're doing a hell of a lot better than they were.
I'll put that on there just for you.
There, there you go. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Frankovich, Supervisor Bowe, Supervisor Bass?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, first, I want to thank Dr. Frankovich and the Sheriff and Michelle for all they're doing and their patience. I know I'm not the only one sending them all sorts of emails on all sorts of questions. I have really no answers. So but I appreciate that they are always respectful and take time to to get me the best information that they can. And I hope they're taking care of themselves. That's one thing I think a lot of us are hearing about. And we're not necessarily taking care of ourselves. But my question is, along the lines of Supervisor Bones, the one I'm getting the most often still is about the airport. And I think everybody is still getting that. And I don't think you, you might have covered that. I don't think you did in your earlier conversation. But now that we're going to be going down to one flight in a day and one flight out, do we have any plans to at least consider where people are coming from, whether they're from New York or somewhere else? Are we asking them to quarantine? What are we, what are we actually telling people when they get off the plane? I know we have, you know, placards around the airport, but I don't know. Do we follow up on that? Is, I mean, is there any way we can at least track that? Because that seems to still be one of the ones I'm I'm getting the most emails about. So I was just curious about that.
Well, I, you know, I understand that, you know, travel's been a big, big, big concern of ours all the way along and certainly going forward. But, you know, we did, you know, note to people, of course, that we don't have authority to close the airport locally. And and even if we could, we do depend on some of the essential workers coming in that way to serve our county. So it would be problematic for sure. As you noted, we have put signage up throughout the airport that informs people arriving that they are expected to quarantine for 14 days on arrival, self-quarantine, and what that means. And to contact us if there are questions, concerns, or people are ill, of course. And at this time, that's what we have in place. Certainly, you know, you point out areas of potential discussion about sort of, you know, doing something more onsite in terms of screening. But of course, it's really sort of personnel issues and all kinds of things about about that. I believe the number of people coming in is very small, as you said, because of the reduced flights. And I would argue that there's a much larger issue of people driving into our area than coming through an airport. So specifically targeting that is probably, you know, a relatively small component of movement within our county in terms of prevention practices.
And I, I think what people are thinking is, a lot of the people on the planes are coming from areas like New York and elsewhere. And I think it just has them more concerned. And I agree with you about the traveling up and down the road. It's, you know, that would be hard to stop. It's just, it's just hard to explain to people, especially now that we do have just one flight. And we're very fortunate that we're able to have a flight at all, given all of this. But but people are seeing that. It's like, well, you're down to one. Why can't you just do that once a day, be there and, you know, personally speak to everyone? So I'm just saying, I still haven't ever figured out a really good email I can send back to people that reads that.
All right. Well, I promise we'll discuss that.
Thank you. And I was, it's funny, when Supervisor Bowe talked about, you know, people want more information. And I was thinking, more means different things to different people. So you're trying to hit a lot of moving targets here. And the last thing I'd ask, and this is more, I guess, for staff, is when we have these updates, is there some point in time where we can have someone from Economic Development come and kind of give an overview of of what's happening there? Because that seems to be something we're all dealing with. And it's constantly changing and very confusing to constituents. And so.
Big discussion on the town hall I did last night as well. And I think that information was really useful.
See, Neilson, oh, no, sorry, Director Stevens?
Thank you. I just wanted to, I think it's important when we're talking about the data and why it is that people want to know certain things, that the root of that most likely really comes from a place of fear and anxiety. And I think all of us are experiencing some some level of that. And sometimes, just acknowledging that helps, that that we are experiencing uncertainty, and that does evoke a level of anxiety. So when we are talking to individuals, whether it's our family members or constituents or whatever, just acknowledging that can really help. And sometimes, there's no, you know, specific reason for wanting to know information. Sometimes, information helps people feel better, even if it doesn't, if even if it shouldn't change their behavior in any way. So that is just to offer up a perspective when we're talking with folks in the community. That's a lot of what I do on the phone with service providers that are wanting to know how to keep their staff safe, how to keep their their consumer safe. Just talking about that can really validate people's experience. And that's what I think what we all need right now, too. So just to offer that.
Thank you, Michelle. So I did want to say a couple of things with regard to getting people into the county from other areas. We've gotten quite a few complaints or concerns about potential for people coming into work in the cannabis industry. And I know that Dr. Frankovich has put out some advice in that regard. You might not fly into the area from New York, but you might drive, or you might drive from the Bay Area, or you might fly in from from another country and then drive here. So the there are some guidelines for people who are employing people from outside the county. And one of those is quarantine. And the other is to employ locals if possible. Is that correct, Dr.?
Yes. Well, you know, we made those specific recommendations, Chair Fennel, that, as you mentioned, that locally, that farmers prioritize hiring from within the area. We have lots of people who would like to work, to also quarantine for 14 days upon arrival before mixing with workforces. And then finally, that anyone coming in has to abide by our state as well as local shelter-in-place orders in, you know, in good faith and do that. So, you know, I think all of those considerations need to be taken into account with anyone arriving into the area.
So one of the things that I hear, I know my colleagues have heard other things, but I've heard a lot about this state that we're in right now, Supervisor Bowe touched on it a little bit, people who have recovered. But there's also word coming out now that people can be reinfected, or they may actually not have lost the virus at all, and they're showing symptoms after it seems that they have cured, it had been cured. Is that part of your reluctance to say that they actually have been cured, Dr. Frankovich?
In this instance, actually, not. It really is more just a matter of when we present data, we're trying to use it in a standardized way that'll, you know, again, can translate across county and state lines. However, you know, you raise an interesting point. There's debate in the in the scientific community right now. I think we've seen those reports about individuals who had cleared perhaps on testing and later developed symptomatology. I think right now, a lot of the thinking is that those individuals likely had not completely cleared and simply are relapsing from that same illness. Obviously, it's a minority of patients who've developed this infection, who have difficulties outside that normal course of their illness. But it's an area that we're watching and to see what data emerges.
And so that brings up an interesting question for me in terms of the fact that right now, we don't have any new cases. But as far as healthcare is concerned, every person who enters the hospital has is potentially infected, and they still have to use those PPEs, et cetera. So how is that working for local healthcare providers? Because they're right, right now, they're, even if we don't get any new cases, we're still right in the middle of the COVID emergency.
Yes. And so, you know, everyone is following those same practices. You're right. They are, it varies a little bit by institution. Many facilities have had staff working in sort of very basic PPE for all patient encounters, but using higher level PPE when a case is suspected. You know, for instance, when someone is presenting with, you know, fever and cough, is a little different area of concern than when someone is coming in, for instance, with trauma. And so but in both instances, they are being conservative and using some level of PPE to protect themselves and as well as patients. And so that's why one of the really important things is for people to remember is that we continue to use PPE and impact their supplies during this time when we aren't actually seeing cases. And so we have to be really conscious of the fact that how can we extend and reuse some of this so that we'll have it when we need it? And also, again, the reason for encouraging the general public not to utilize the type of PPE that healthcare workers and first responders need to do their job.
Thank you, Doctor. I had a very quick question for the Sheriff in terms of compliance. I know that I have gotten calls about certain bars staying open or certain activities continuing. And I was wondering, are you, it seems that most people are complying, Sheriff, but I just wondered, have you had those kinds of incidents throughout the county?
Yeah, so we continue to get phone calls. Our anonymous tip line is gets probably the most calls daily into our JIC. And so those calls are being forwarded to essentially code enforcement and law enforcement to ensure that that those are actually followed up on. If there's actually things that are occurring that people want to call our dispatch centers through the county or the cities, please do so. Everyone is very. Um, everyone is very, very attentive to the shelter in place order. There's very specific information out there. What, uh, essential businesses should be open, what should be closed? And so we would be more than happy to go and, and provide warning letters, issue citations to people that are blatantly violating the order. Um, so right now we've had complaints, um, you know, around Trinidad on scenic drive regarding, uh, lots of vehicles blocking the roadway and people not, um, uh, social distancing and those sort of things. So we're working with Public Works right now and that community to see what would be the steps. And that the next step could be shutting down the road just for, um, just for residents only and shutting down those parking areas. Um, CHP as well as the sheriff's office is going to be doing regular patrols in those areas. If there's people that are violating the parking issues, they will be getting citations for that. Um, but the fact is that we do have a lot of beach areas and, um, a lot of people like to go to the beach and you can do good social distancing on the beach with your immediate family, your, I'm sorry, your, your people that you live with is, is essentially what the order says. So, um, so we want to make sure that people maintain their social distance, only go out with their household if they're going to go with anyone. Um, and, um, and so that's, that's really what, uh, what we're seeing.
Thank you very much, Sheriff. Um, I love it. Uh, and, and yes, Supervisor Madron will go to you next. I just want to remind people, I'll be opening it up to public comment, um, shortly now. So please be ready if you have a public comment or question. Supervisor Madron.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, Sheriff, I really appreciate the work you've all been doing up there, uh, well, all over. But scenic drive, that's become quite a scene up there. And I don't think people are capable of keeping it together. Uh, the drive to go to the beach and the surf with the waves, with the weather, the way it's been, it's going to continue to be a real nightmare up there. Uh, I appreciate the presence. I've been seeing, uh, patrols regularly. Thank you for that. Uh, perhaps if some citations do start going out, that might get people to respond. But I do believe we're probably going to need to shut the road down, uh, to everything but local traffic. Uh, and that's what the community is asking for. So again, let me know if there's anything I can help there. But I appreciate all your, uh, staff's work on, on that. Um, one of the other concerns I've had is people are very confused as to why liquor stores are an essential service, whereas bookstores are not. Uh, and I'm getting a lot of requests for bookstores to be open and available. Uh, I know at the library, they've done a checkout system. They don't have onsite. But, um, just thoughts on that. I mean, why is liquor essential, but books are not?
Well, a lot of the liquor stores have other food items and that kind of thing. It's general grocery and, 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 um, so liquor is a part of, um, that essential, uh, businesses. And so that we're, those are remaining open. And usually when it comes to browsing, people know exactly what they want. They choose their product, they go buy it, they leave. When it comes to books, oftentimes they're, they're sitting, they're reading, they're browsing, they're, you know, touching a book, putting it back and those kinds of things. I've, I've spoken with some, some bookstore owners. Uh, I've gotten those complaints as well. Uh, this order does not mean that they can't turn into a book delivery business. And so if people want specific books, they can make a phone call, they can deliver curbside, they can deliver home, they can put it in the mail. So people have to be innovative in, in, in how they run their businesses. But, um, but having the ability to go inside of bookstore and browse, um, is something that we can't do right now. That's something that has to, we have to modify our order that may come in the future. But right now it is not a central service for, to offer that, um, that particular business.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Supervisor Beth? Supervisor Beth?
Thank you, ma'am, Chair. Um, yeah, and this was just one, I know we've had a lot of conversations on masks, but when I heard compliance, it, it came to my mind, um, I've heard from a few people in the last several days of some really large businesses where people go in and they were alarmed because, you know, staff wasn't wearing masks and then management wasn't wearing masks. And so how do we explain to people that while masks can be beneficial right now, it is not, um, mandatory? And, and we like it when Rex wears a mask. They're always different. But, um, it's really hard to explain to people, well, you know, they think it should be mandatory. And I just am finding myself in a tough place explaining why some and why some don't. And maybe there's best practices, but is that a compliance issue or is that just, if it's not mandatory, it's not mandatory?
Yeah. I mean, I, I, I get the frustration, you know, at this time it's, it's a, it's a recommendation. We've strongly recommended the use of these. Um, and again, the idea being, you know, my mask protects you, your mask protects me. Um, and I think, you know, one of the important things, um, that people can do is, is give feedback to business owners about the fact that they would feel safer if they're, the business and their staff were, um, wearing masks, um, to help decrease virus in the community and possibilities of exposure. Um, but you're right, um, in the absence of, of an order stating that, um, that, uh, you know, it, it is a recommendation. Um, obviously nice mask as we move forward. And if there is, um, at some point as, as we look at things like, um, easing some shelter in place components, um, I suspect that, um, mandatory masking is going to be a part of that. Um, and, uh, but we just are not quite there yet. I do again, want to emphasize, um, the mask is great. Um, and, but people also can use, um, you know, scarves, other things that are improvised such as bandanas and that, um, to meet that, uh, requirement. So it doesn't necessarily mandate a purchase of anything to be able to cover, um, mouth and nose. And so we've been trying to emphasize a lot, uh, that a lot to folks as well.
One I would like to thank, there's a lot of local community members who have been stepping up, um, doing some amazing masks. The one thing I learned about a mask is your glasses fog up. So it's kind of dangerous if you try to wear them while driving. Not a good idea.
If you're through the chair, if your glasses fog up, it's not sealing right. That's how you test to see if it's sealing right.
You got a beard. You can't, we'll talk offline.
Okay. So with that, I will, I will open it up to public, oh, sorry. Yes. Everybody, thank you, Supervisor Wilson.
On the subject of masks and, um, and certainly there's been a whole uh, bevy of people creating them. Certainly we have in our household and various face, uh, sizes and all that stuff. But one thing I've been seeing is a lot of masks that have the valve on them. And, um, it seems to me, and maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong, that when they have the valve on them, then generally speaking, the exhale is unfiltered in the mask with the valves. And so, uh, is there a way we can sort of let folks know that, you know, that if the point of this is to, where in wearing a mask is to not spread, uh, the disease, assuming that you may be a carrier, a symptomatic carrier, that, uh, maybe we should be talking about those valves and, and ways to address that or, or let people know that if the point is to avoid spread, maybe the, the ones with the valves, if they aren't modified with a filter, uh, you know, people should be educated that. Because I've spoken to a few people that just don't know. They just, they just put on a mask. They don't know that the valve is unfiltered. Uh, port.
Yeah, that, that's an interesting point because, you know, I, obviously in the healthcare setting, those masks are equipped differently. Um, in terms of, you know, filtering and such. And, um, I'm, I'm not sure which industry is using the other kinds of masks, um, where you don't have any filtering on the exhale. But, um, you know, we can certainly try and point that out in, in some messaging as well. If, if people are seeing that used frequently in the community. Um, again, with our general recommendation for cloth masking, it shouldn't be an issue, but people have all kinds of things hanging around at home. I understand that.
And also those, those are really the most popular masks selling online. They just look cooler, right? And they have the valve on them and people are, I've seen a lot of them. I think people are assuming that they're doing something that they're not. Um, and want to make sure that that's part of that. Um, everyone else has addressed, I mean, I had questions related to the airport and all the other stuff. And I think most of that's been addressed here. So, uh, a good job. And, um, oh, the other, the only other thing is in hospitalizations, we still have three hospitalizations. And that's at least listed on the, on, on data. Um, that is kind of a number, whether someone's in a hospital or not in a hospital, right? I mean, so maybe we, I don't know how that gets updated in terms of changes or, or the, is the number three still current? Are there still three people in hospital? And is that a piece of data that's important to us or not? I guess.
Sure. Um, and, and you're right. With the reporting of that is a standardized reporting that people of cases who's, how many have required hospitalization? And so it has no bearing on whether they're currently inpatient or not inpatient. And, you know, we, because again, we don't typically report on a particular status of any particular patient, right? So yes, it is an ongoing tally. If we have additional individuals who require hospitalization in the course of their illness, that number will change.
Right. Okay. Well, I, I am going to open it up for public comment if there is any public comment on this item. And, um, Ryan, do you have any indication that there is public comment on this item?
Yes, Sheriff Fennel, there is public comment and I've unmuted the public commenter.
Thank you.
Estelle, it's Kent Swatsky. Can you hear me, Estelle?
Yes.
Kent Swatsky here again. Um, you know, I, I really take exception to the fact that we are not doing more or could not do more at our airport. I think one flight a day, maybe 17 people is what I was told come in. I can't think of one single case of going anywhere in the United States that didn't come in by air unless there was a cruise ship. I mean, it didn't come in by car, truck or bicycle to the United States. That the, the evidence is it was transmitted by air. I mean, that's pretty well what it was. Uh, strongly support everybody considering what's about to happen. Normally a flu or any kind of contagion of any nature goes to the schoolchildren and then it's transmitted to us old people. That's just kind of the gift of having grandchildren in your backyard and your children around. And that's normal. Now we've circumvented that process. So what hap, this is training day. What happens in November, uh, or October, November? If this comes back, are we going to shut the schools down and shut the economy down from October to May or something? Uh, I hope we learn from what, what's going on here. I hope we're able to. My understanding is these tests now, they showed it on the news today. It's a 15 minute time lapse. You can do four tests in an hour. Current technology hopefully will be, be available out. And those are, those are tests done in 15 minutes. In other words, it takes that long and you have your result. Um, the other thing, our third world countries seem to be way ahead of the curve than we are. When, when the people wanted to go to Kino, Kino Bay, which is a beautiful beach down in Mexico where I'm considering doing an acquisition or to this little San Miguel de Hortecita, which is where the river is, there's tens of thousands of people who go there. Well, this time the police plan has simply said, you are not entering either of these two venues unless you have proof of residency. In other words, nobody was on the beach where there would normally be, be thousands and thousands of people. So until we understand that this is not what's going to be done, I think we're going to really be in trouble, but that's just my crystal ball. I really hope that we change the, the thing as far as the, um, airport and learn from all our successes and our mistakes. Uh, Trinity County, I think has none. I mean, you've got all kinds of cars going through. Maybe they're not testing for it. I think a lot of people actually have had it that are not recognized. And, uh, and, and the big thing we have to be aware of is if possible, that immunity is not developed and people may get it two or three times. So, um, interesting times. Thanks for this format where I can comment. Bye.
Thank you. Um, is there any further public comment?
Hello, Thomas Mulder. Again, uh, two items I want to bring up on this. First was I read a lot of studies that they're trying to come up with a test, uh, to see if people have antibodies. Like maybe they possibly already had it. There's lots of rumors that people potentially may have had it in early winter, like November, December. So it, I don't think I heard anything on that. So it'd be nice at some point in time, if that looks more realistic, to have an update on that. And the second thing, uh, big concern for, you know, the lawlessness, I was reading that bail has been changed to $0. And there's a lot of, uh, noticing a lot of people aren't really caring about crime too much because they're just going to get a ticket and then the courts are overrun and can't get them into a speedy trial. So a lot of these people may, um, may basically just get away with a bunch of petty crimes, which is a nuisance to the community. I read Ha, Sheriff Hansel's, uh, opposition to, which I support, uh, the $0 bail. So just something to be mindful of is, uh, keeping us from becoming, um, a third world country. So thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Thomas. Um, any further comments on this item? See, no, now bring it back to the board and I want to thank, uh, Dr. Frankovich, Director Stevens, um, Sheriff Hansel. Is there anything else you guys would like to say before we let you go?
Uh, just a general thank you to the community for cooperating and, uh, helping to make this, uh, really difficult thing successful. And I promise to just keep people informed as we, as we move forward.
Thank you, Doctor. And Sheriff is nodding his head as well. Thank you very, very much. Appreciate everything. And, um, I think what I probably would like to do is that as we go forward, if it's deemed appropriate to have an item like this on each agenda, uh, the next meeting we'll have is two weeks from now. And, uh, at that point I probably would like to include a presentation also from the Economic Recovery, uh, Central Division of the EOC. That would be kind of interesting as well. So thank you very much, uh, everybody for being here. And we'll now go to our next item on the agenda, and that is public comment on items not on the agenda. Is there anyone with comments on items not on the agenda? Okay. Sheriff, Sheriff Hansel.
Yes, I have something. Uh, this week is National Dispatchers Week. And so I would just want to call attention to that. Our dispatchers throughout the county in our public safety answer points do a phenomenal job on, um, on receiving the calls for service, being calm in the storm and being able to give people the assurance that help is on the way to filter the information from our deputy sheriffs, um, and, and provide that information for incoming units. We had, uh, um, a deputy shot out the other night and, uh, the deputy and the dispatcher, you know, performed flawlessly in providing the essential information that was necessary to get backup available to track the deputy to ensure that he was okay. Um, so they are the unsung heroes. And, uh, so they dedicate this week to acknowledge them and their efforts. And so I just want to applaud them. And then there literally is a thankless job. I mean, they're up there for 12 hours, working tirelessly to make sure that there is someone always there to answer the 911 call. So I know this board has been very, very supportive of our dispatchers. Um, and, and our current staffing level is that we are currently fully staffed. The only thing is that we have, uh, two people that are training, I think six or seven right now. So it is, it is a, um, a tremendous task that they're doing. So I just want to thank our, our dispatchers for everything they do.
Thank you very much, Sheriff.
Through the chair, Sheriff Hansel, thank you for that because they did it. And thank you for mentioning the deputy the other night. That was a catastrophe that could have been a lot worse. And we had a great deputy on the job and your follow-up was, uh, but your team was great. So, and, um, I sent off a letter, we, there's a letter been sent, um, supporting AB, uh, 1945, uh, making dispatchers, classifying them as first responders is going. So we sent it, I sent a letter, I think, um, uh, in support of that because I think you fully support that also. So I think it's the understanding because they are the first line. So thank you for recognizing them.
Thank you, Sheriff Hansel. Uh, any further public comment on items not on the agenda?
Hello, Thomas Mulder. Hello, Thomas Mulder here. I'm going to start off by reading, uh, your agenda for April 6th, 2020. Email public comment. To submit an emailed public comment to the board, please email COB@CO.humboldt.ca.us and provide your name, the agenda item number or numbers on which you wish to speak. These comments will be read into the record and can be provided anytime leading up to the meeting. So I will note my comments earlier today that, that my comments were not read into the record as posted on your agenda. So now I'm going to change gears. I got three minutes. I urge you to change the ordinance, uh, 2.0 to allow 200 square feet, um, for parcels under an acre and 500 square feet with parcels over an acre. I've said this for probably over a year now. I think, uh, even more so in these trying financial times. I think it would do well for the community to do this. I think a lot of people are going to be home and gardening. And, you know, they might be able to cultivate their own medicine and not have to buy. Because I mean, even me as a cultivator that likes to be able to legally sell, I think people need to have the opportunity to be able to produce their own products, uh, especially in tight financial times. Um, I'm asking you to not send out abatement letters for people of 1,000 square feet or under, at least until, uh, the end of August. Just to keep that in mind, some people might be a little bit over. the end of August, just to keep that in mind. Some people might be a little bit over. I remind you that things within the Brown Act have been changed. But to discuss a topic, it must be posted on the agenda or covered by an agenda item. Please remember this moving forward. And lastly, I appreciate those of you that respond and are doing your best to keep us all informed and addressing our concerns. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Thomas. Uh, any further comment on items not on the agenda? Looks like Mr. Swatzky is back.
Estelle with a vengeance. Can you hear me? Anyway, I realize you're, I realize you're building a plane while you're flying into the term you use here. Under public comment for today, it says, it has requested the speaker sign the sheet at the front door of the chamber. Unfortunately, I won't be doing that today, but I still wish to make public comment. I do support, you know, Billy's, uh, need for that. We need a countywide system to handle dispatchers. I was speaking with the Arcade of Fire chief. He is not happy with that system he currently has with Cal Fire. And yet he, and yet he's understanding is that five years before we're going to be able to ramp Billy's up, we need to expedite that, throw money at it, whatever it takes to make that happen as soon as possible. We're going to save that amount of money countywide. We also need countywide fire. We need countywide, um, all kinds of things that need to be countywide because this saves as far as our fixed cost. Secondly, my other topic here is that, um, Humboldt County Taxpayer League, I'm the executive director, and we are strongly endorsing and wish to help move forward the Betty Chin Trailer Project. Uh, I think it's on the Crowley lot down there. Trying to find out what's been the problem and hold up on this. It appears that City of Eureka staff went ahead and I know Coastal Commission gets blamed for moving slow on things, but that isn't the case. They misdiagnosed certain areas of this project as wetlands. And of course, when other people came out there and said, it's not wetlands. So we've been spinning our wheels on a project that needs to go forward expediently. Uh, it saves the taxpayers a whole bunch of money when people donate things like the trailers and we get donated work. And I think we can probably do this project if we all get behind it and use our expertise and ask some why questions and work with the Coastal Commission, the Water Board, and any other things. We're happy to do that. I mean, I'm happy to do that. I have people that I call in those venues. And, uh, let's move that project forward with the City of Eureka. I gave Rex a copy of the letter they sent me and they, they want to do it. I think they just need some help, some expertise and some encouragement, maybe a little more money than a hundred thousand. But that's my comment on that for today. Taxpayers League supports that project strongly.
Thank you very much. Uh, very impressed with everybody staying within their time. That's wonderful. Well, uh, are there any other public comments? I don't see any on my screen, but.
I don't, I don't have any other public comments and I'll hold up the sign once again for everyone with the meeting, uh, password as well.
Thank you. And, uh, I'm one, uh, think just, uh, a little bit of housework here, Ryan. As we move forward, perhaps instead of having the, um, logo, once we get into a time where people can do public comment, you might be able to put that up there so that we, you know, people get those numbers in time. I want to thank everybody for, uh, how this meeting is moving along. We go to our next agenda item. And this one is the fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, Measure Z year-end projections. And again, um, for those who are interested in commenting on this, you can follow the instructions that, uh, you were given earlier and Ryan will put those numbers up, uh, at some point here. I will toss it now to C O Nielsen and Assistant C O Hayes to get us to, uh, start the discussion on Measure Z. Welcome.
Thank you, Sheriff Fennel. I will turn it over to Assistant C O Alicia Hayes and our Administrative Services Officer Fiona Wilson to give your board a presentation on Measure Z.
Welcome, Alicia and Fiona.
Good morning.
Good morning. I, I'm gonna, Fiona will be presenting, uh, speaking. I am going to share. We have a PowerPoint, so I'm going to share that, um, for you. And again, Fiona will be presenting, uh, but I of course am available here, uh, for questions. Can you see, can you see the PowerPoint?
Yep.
Fabulous.
All right. Uh, good morning, Sheriff Fennel and members of the board. As C O Nielsen said, I'm Fiona Wilson, Administrative Services Officer for the County Administrative Office. I'm assisting with the management and staffing of the Measure Z Fund and Citizens Advisory Committee. Assistant C O Alicia Hayes is here with us today. Uh, she'll help answer any questions you may have. We're bringing before your board an update on fiscal year nineteen twenty Measure Z year-end projections and a ten-year revenue and salary forecast, a review of the Citizens Advisory Committee recommendations for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, and the Measure Z Fund carryforward policy with one carryforward request from D H H S. Did we, did we change, change slides? Great.
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. There is an estimated ten million, nine hundred ninety-four thousand dollars in revenue available for allocation in the upcoming year with seven point eight eight million estimated for ongoing expenditures and three million, one hundred five thousand, three hundred forty-one dollars available for allocation at your board's discretion. Due to increasing staff costs, the Measure Z Citizens Advisory Committee submitted a letter to your board expressing concerns related to ongoing funding and allocation trends. That's included in your packet as attachment four. Your board directed staff to work with the sheriff, chief probation officer, and district attorney to discuss the long-term plan and bring options back to the board. Measures Z revenue projections through fiscal year twenty-nine thirty were calculated based on sales tax projections by hinder leader Delamas and Associates, and those were compared to ongoing salary and benefit costs. Those projections indicate that in-county salary and benefit expenditures will not exceed our available revenues in the foreseeable future. Uh, however, revised HDL sales tax projections received late last week forecast a one point six percent decrease in state sales tax revenues for the upcoming year due to the coronavirus pandemic. And, uh, so as the economic impact of the pandemic remains uncertain in the long term, staff will continue to monitor economic trends as the pandemic unfolds and provide your board with an updated analysis at third quarter. While projections indicate that in-county salary and benefit expenditures will not exceed available revenues in the foreseeable future, and that is even with that, uh, decrease in revenues, the updated decrease in revenues, the work group has identified several strategies to increase availability of funds in future years. The work group has committed to implementing the following strategies. That includes moving vacancies to Measure Z positions, staffing Measure Z positions with lower step employees, moving positions likely to accrue overtime out of Measure Z, capping Measure Z personnel allocations at current levels, meaning no new staffing requests from county departments for the foreseeable future, and providing an annual Measure Z forecast and update to your board. Additionally, the work group identified, uh, another strategy that would require your board's approval, and that is capping Measures Z expenditures at, uh, twenty twenty-one budget totals with the general fund absorbing ongoing increased costs in future years. Uh, the financial impact of capping those ongoing expenditures, uh, from the fund and using those general fund dollars to absorb those costs is an estimated fifteen million, ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred thirteen dollars over ten years. So those recently revised projections with that one point six percent decline in sales tax revenues indicate that this amount would likely be higher. Uh, as it was a clear intention of your board that Measures Z projects would in no way impact the general fund, capping the allocations would not be recommended by the C O. Uh, staff will continue to monitor Measures Z revenues and provide your board with updated revenue projections at third quarter. Um, so included in your packet, the Citizens Advisory Committee has provided your board with a prioritized list of the applications for twenty twenty-one, as detailed in the letter of recommendations from the committee, as well as in your packet. The recommendations listed above would allocate three million, one thousand four hundred five dollars to fully fund the six highest ranked applications. They're listed there on that slide as part of the annual budget process. There's a remaining balance of one hundred three thousand, nine hundred thirty-five dollars available to partially fund the application ranked number seven. The committee's list begins with the highest priority applications, allowing for your board to work down the list to fund more applications should additional funding become available at first quarter or mid-year. The City of Fortuna's Drug Task Force application was ranked number seven and would receive the remaining available balance of one hundred three thousand, nine hundred thirty-five. Again, the committee's list begins with the highest priority applications, allowing for your board to work its way down the list to fund more applications should additional funding become available at first quarter and mid-year. And here you see the remainder of the committee's ranked list. The list, all the submitted applications and the letters of support have been included in your packets. Also contained in today's report is the Measure Z carryforward policy and one carryforward request from D H H S. The purpose of the Measure Z carryforward funding policy is to ensure that recipients and staff are aware of the requirements and limitations of all carryforward requests. The policy also gives the authority to approve requests to the C O. Uh, D H H S Social Services requests the carryforward of Measures Z funds from this fiscal year into twenty twenty-one in the amount of eighty-nine thousand, five hundred fifty-four dollars. These funds were specifically allocated for a software upgrade to the structured decision-making intake assessment tool for adult protective services. This upgrade has been delayed by the vendor until next fiscal year. So contained in today's report are four recommendations to your board. Approve the request to carryforward D H H S Measures Z funds into fiscal year twenty twenty-one to fund the software upgrade. Review and approve the Measures Z carryforward funding policy. Review and provide direction on the recommendations from Measures Z Citizens Advisory Committee for fiscal year twenty twenty-one and receive and discuss the financial forecast of Measures Z revenue and salary expenses over the next ten years. So I thank you very much for the opportunity to present to you all today. And with that, I conclude this staff report and we would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Fiona. Um, so unless, uh, the rest of the board wants to continue to have this, uh, presentation under, uh, their screen, I'd prefer to go back to the original screen where we can see people. But if, uh, because I like seeing all of the supervisors. Thank you. So with that, um, we have a number of supervisors with their hands up, starting with Supervisor Madron. Supervisor Madron.
Yes, um, I actually, uh, would like to go back real quickly to the presentation. I think it was slide number four or five, the, uh, the ten-year projection.
Slide number three, please.
Window number three? There it is.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that. So, um, on the row that, uh, lays out the revenues with an assumed change in percent, I see, uh, for several years, it's projected at one percent or point five percent. I mean, you know, we're going to be coming out of COVID, right, and all these things. Uh, but then it slowly, well, it stays steady and then in twenty twenty-five, all the way to twenty thirty, it's projected at two percent, uh, and then the last year, twenty-nine thirty-three percent increase. So, um, I know that's what we all would hope for is that the economy will kick back in and that things will improve and we'll have these increased revenues, increased sales and sales tax. But, um, that doesn't seem very conservative to me. I mean, I'm just curious if you were to run the one percent across the whole thing, that would, that would change the revenue projection, uh, to some degree, which would then even further lower the amount of money available for the discretionary project. So I'm just curious why you folks thought two percent, three percent was an appropriate, uh, projection tool or number.
Thank you, Supervisor Madron. I'll, I'll, I'll start and then I'll hand it over to Assistant C O Alicia Hayes to, to fill in any gaps I may have left. Um, and, and so I have that worksheet open here. So this PowerPoint was created last week prior to some revised projections that we received. And, and those projections, those revisions were only for the upcoming fiscal year. And we are, as, um, as are you, I'm sure, looking forward to receiving, um, projections a bit further out. It's a little early for that. Um, but I did just plug into that worksheet, the one percent and pull it all the way across. And, um, and so the projected revenues for twenty-nine thirty, uh, at just one percent growth for the next ten years is twelve million, twenty-three thousand, nine hundred seventy-six dollars, leaving, uh, one, one point, one, uh, one, a million, one hundred twenty-five thousand, three hundred forty-nine, um, available to allocate.
Right. So yeah, that, that helps to, uh, uh, emphasize the point that I'm making that, you know, that number right there, that projection on revenues is critical to, uh, our analysis where we might be in ten years. And of course, this is all projections, right? But just by going with one percent rather than two or three, you can see we just lost another three-quarter million dollars in the discretionary account. This concern about the fixed cost continuing to go up every year in our rollover or non-discretionary chunk to seven million plus, uh, you know, that was brought to us by Z. We've asked, uh, the board has asked to have staff come back to us with, uh, discussions on this. That's what this is. I, I appreciate that responsiveness to that request. Uh, but now what it is, is so, so what do we do about this? I really appreciate the recommendations that came out of the work group. Frankly, rather than voluntary, I would suggest that as a board, we might want to consider adopting those measures as, uh, mandatory to try and manage this account. But from my perspective, I would still very much like to put a cap on the salary positions part of this budget and basically say to the departments, here's the amount of money you got in twenty twenty. This is what you need to work within. Uh, you need to stay within that dollar amount so that we can maintain three million or more for the discretionary account because there's so many other important safety projects all over this community that I don't want to see that fund continue to dwindle away. So at least that's my preference is that we would make the recommendations from the work group mandatory and that we would still initiate a cap on, uh, the salaried part of all of this. I know that that's hard for the departments. I appreciate everything that everybody's doing, but it's important to maintain the fund for all these other important activities as well. So that's my two cents.
Thank you, Supervisor Madron. Supervisor Bass?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I have a, a couple of questions. One is regarding, you know, the talk now of sales tax being deferred because of COVID nineteen for a period of time. What point in, how are we going to look at that? Are we going to be seeing this at one of the, um, quarterly reviews? Because I think that could, you know, that's going to have some effect, I would think, but I'm curious if we have a process for that. And then, um, my other question, and I've had this question for a while and I've talked with my Measures Z person. But especially now when schools are closed, I, I see, you know, I appreciate the school resource officers. And I'm just, I'm looking at things thinking, so what does this really look like right now? What, where, you know, I'm almost, I wish we could help them find funding from other sources, which I do believe there are, so that it's not necessarily directly out of our Measures Z funds. And I'm, I'm just kind of curious what's happening when there's not school is basically. And perhaps they are doing other things in the community, but I think for me, I'd want to know because if those dollars are going in for a school resource officer and there's not school, I want to know what that person's doing. So that was just another thought. So any answers, good.
So may I?
C O Nielsen?
Thank you. So, um, in our staff report, we do talk about some of the.
Thank you. So in our staff report, we do talk about some of the very things that Virginia Supervisor Bass has brought up regarding the sales tax deferral that Governor Newsom has made an executive order on. And we talk about the fact that we will be bringing back additional information to your board during the third quarter budget report. Because this is a relatively new situation that the governor has placed us in, because sales tax could potentially, current year sales tax could potentially be due in July of two thousand, twenty-one. So that does put the county in a little bit of a predicament. So we'll be looking at that more closely in the third quarter budget report. I'd also just like to say to your board that we do look at Measures Z throughout the fiscal year. And so in the first quarter budget reports and the mid-year budget reports, we always bring Measures Z back to you. I also just want to touch a little bit on bringing that one percent revenue growth across that ten-year projection. You'll also want to note that in the salaries, there was a generous three percent salary growth across that spreadsheet. And so if you had a significant recession, something maybe even much more impactful than the Great Depression, you wouldn't see that kind of salary growth across that ten-year period. So I'd just like to also point that out to your board. And the school resource officer, I believe either Fiona or Alicia may be able to answer that question.
I can answer that. Yes, I reached out to them Supervisor Bass and, and they are still working as school resource officers. You know, they are working with the schools responding to issues. There are truancy issues even in a virtual format. And but they are also, when they are able, they are filling in with general patrol duties as well. Did you have something? Oh, sorry.
Yes. I've seen Sheriff Hansel, yes.
Yeah, just want to just fill everyone in on that school resource officer. So there are, I know probably everyone's aware that juvenile delinquency does go up in the summertime. And so when there's no school, juveniles are out and about. And so school resource officers are able to respond Monday through Friday in their schedule to those juvenile delinquency issues that are occurring throughout their city. So that does take place. As far as alternate funding goes, there are other funding sources out there. Recently, there's federal grants, cops grants that is available and agencies can, can apply for those. And so I know that agencies are looking at alternate funding sources for, for deputy positions, for officer positions. And so we will be, as soon as that opens back up after the COVID stuff is, is, is through, those grant opportunities will be there. So, so we're hoping that that there will be other public safety agencies that will be able to, to look at some alternate funding or maybe some of these areas that are currently funded through Measures Z.
Okay, and I do appreciate that, because I'd seen the list of the last funds that had been awarded. And when I noticed that none of our schools were really on there, or, or if any, maybe a few, but I don't even think they were, it just brought it to mind that maybe there's other ways besides just depending on Measures Z, especially as we move into the future. But thank you.
With the chair?
Yes, sure. So Sheriff and then Supervisor Madron.
Yeah, I just had, just wanted to respond to Supervisor Madron's comments about capping the county. I think that is a awful idea. No due respect or disrespect, sir, on that. We do not want to cap county funds on this issue. We don't know how we may need this, you know, to support really the goal of what Measures Z was about, when that is about rural funding of law enforcement. Right now, we're getting, you know, our staffing together. We hope that in this next year that we'll be up to full, full staffing. We have seven, we're going to hire three more at the academy. We're going to send ten more to the academy in July, so, which will get us up to full staffing come next January. So I don't want to have the county paint themselves in a corner, because you never know what next year will bring. And by capping the county expenses on this, we're limiting our own county's ability to function. And so law enforcement needs Measures Z. That was the intention behind passing of the sales tax measure was to boost law enforcement, roads, rural ambulance and fire. So those are the basic fundamental things that Measures Z should support. Everything else outside of that is, is our good programs. Mind you, there's a lot of great programs that would like, we would like to fund. But in reality, we have to focus on what the county is, is really needs to deliver to make sure that we are matching what the people voted for. You know, for this tax measure. And that's my two cents.
Supervisor Madron?
Sheriff, I certainly understand your position. I don't take it personal. I do very much appreciate that, that perspective. But the fact is that if we don't do something like this, eventually there is a cap. You know, the cap is how much money we bring in through the sales tax. And through the projections, if it were one percent, we'll be down to about one point, one million in ten years of discretionary. So I mean, you could project that out and say that maybe in fifteen years, if things are worse, it could hit sooner. If things are better, it might take twenty years for us. But now that Measure O or Measure Z is permanent and ongoing, we will eventually reach a cap. Whether we do anything or not, there is a cap on the amount of money there and your department, DHHS probation and the rest will ultimately have to deal with that cap at that point in time. But that is ten or fifteen years out there. And I, I recognize that this isn't an emergency. It's not something urgent, but the fact is, roads are not getting any money out of this hardly at all. Last year, we were able to get a little bit. This year looks like none again. So as you said, the priorities for this funding are not going to all of the things that the community wanted, like roads and other things. So I'm just, as a board member, trying to do my due diligence in balancing all of those needs for the community. And if we continue to escalate the costs and don't cap them, there will never be any money in this account for roads or some of the other important things that need to happen out there in the community. So I was looking for some feedback on how we might balance that. You know, I'm not trying to just cut funding from your department or other places. I appreciate the staff and the working groups' recommendations. As I've said, I think we could make those mandatory and those certainly would go a long way towards trying to maintain this fund. But any rate, I do appreciate your feedback, Sheriff. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Bond, did you want to say something?
Yeah, and I just, I, I think as we look at this, I noticed from six and seven on here, I'd, I'd love to see six and seven reverse school resource officer and the Fortuna Drug Task Force. Because five years ago, we were taking eight to twelve pounds of white drugs hardcore off the streets, and now we're pushing fifty and sixty and seventy pounds. And a majority are coming down from the southern end of the, the county. And, and I think that's because of the intel that drug task force agent gets from being with his officers in Fortuna and that area. I mean, they're not, they're, they're not Fortuna-centric. They get out and about and they see the traffic and things like that. And it's also working in other areas. But I mean, drug heroin, methamphetamine, pills, everything else, since this has become the new highway to bring drugs through the one-on-one rather than I-5. I, I, I would like to see those two reversed. And then I would like to sit there and have our staff or somebody who worked with Humboldt County Office of Education and the school superintendents, just on what we just talked about, grant applications through cops. There's a lot of grant applications out there that would be beneficial for a school resource officer, especially with the proven results that it's been getting. And since we have them, we have that, that proven result. And then I also look at the ones we're funding and I, and I don't know, I don't remember if it was ever taken off the table. But I remember in two thousand, fifteen, when we did the ambulance service in Hoopla, there was a tagline that that funding of two hundred and sixty-eight thousand now gone up thirty, thirty-plus percent. There was a tagline that that was contingent, contingent upon them getting a special district. So they could, you know, because in, in all honesty, I, I worry about the, the ambulance service in Southern Humboldt. I mean, I, I, when do they ask for money and a few other places that are hard to meet the nut when, you know, that, that they have up there in Hoopla. So I, I think that's something that we need to, I, I fully support the ambulance service. I would love to work with them, things like that. And I know that they respond to a lot of accidents on two ninety-nine, but I know we're helping with the Blue Lake Volunteer Party, which is great. We're getting all this great support and everything else. But somewhere in there, we need to get the state to help us support them along their highway and stuff like that. Because we're, we're putting, you know, so maybe some of that money can go towards roads. So that was just, just some thoughts. I didn't know if that contingency that we put in two thousand, fifteen, if it's just easier to just get it from us every year. So, which is the money also, they pay taxes.
I, I, I want to pipe in on this. And thank you so much Supervisor Bond. I'm really concerned about this. I do think that the Drug Task Force Officer in Fortuna has been absolutely invaluable. And I also believe the SRO Officer only because there were questions about the, the role they fill and they have filled in a very, very important role in terms of the response to COVID. It's not just the City of Fortuna. It goes all out into the Eel Valley. So it goes out to Bridgeville, Carlotta, et cetera. And a lot of these kids are in a much better shape because of that school resource officer being available in this emergency time and also through the summer. So I think those are two very, very important positions. And I do also want to say that the Rio Grande City Clerk, it's not a huge clerk, it's not a huge ask, but it's a very important one to that city. By the way, I do, I do want to say very quickly that we will be going into public comment pretty quickly. Ryan will put the numbers up again on the, the screen for your ability to call in to the, to the, there you go, Ryan. Can you lift it up so we see the password as well? There you go. So if people can take a look at those numbers, that's how you get in. And once you have gone through the, the call, the ID, and then the password, you will dial star nine, and that will put you in the queue for a public comment. So in the meantime, I, I would like to say that the it's really, really important for us to look, as I think Supervisor Bond mentioned as well, what our agreement was in terms of the ambulance. And again, I completely support it. But is there any flexibility in the numbers? It, it doesn't look like the the Measures Z Committee did any moving around of numbers. And I'd like to know from Fiona or Alicia, are these what were requested? And was there any flexibility at all in, in, in lessening those numbers in order for other people to be able to get some support?
Yes, Sheriff Fennell, the, and then, and then Sheriff Hansel, if you would like to, to add on to this, the committee did discuss that and decided that rather than providing partial funding to applicants, that they should go with the entire amount.
Sheriff Hansel? Thank you Fiona.
Yes, so the, the, the committee did throw it out there to the individual applicants and said that if you can modify your application, so others can meet some of the requirement and the goal, then we would encourage that as, as opposed to us doing a twenty-five percent cut, which is kind of what was proposed last year. So we could fund more things. The fact is that a lot of the times that really cuts the spirit of what some of these applications were all about. They couldn't really perform all the functions that they said they could do if they weren't fully funded. So it was the goal of this committee to fund the top priorities. But there were several agencies that did make a cut. Fire was the biggest. They cut out, I think, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, something, a huge number like that. So more, more agencies could come in. Fortuna, I think, took a, a, a little bit of a modification on, on one of their applications. But, but that was the goal. And then, and for us as a committee, we just prioritized and we just, we did our top. If there was any conflicts with the, with the priorities, that we revoted on those to make sure there was a clear one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. So this board has an understanding of what the, the committee really wanted funded. And then if there was extra money, then to go to that next step and to fund those.
So was there any discussion at all about Kinnwa Ambulance Service being able to come down a bit?
No, it was thrown out there that they could, anyone could do that. But, but yeah, we didn't, we didn't partially fund them. We just fully funded the, the applications.
Okay. Any further comments or questions Supervisor Madron?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I'm trying to get the information. Maybe somebody there knows, and I appreciated you bringing up the two ninety-nine part to this. I think some people think that Kinnwa just serves the Hoopla Reservation and it clearly does not. It serves that whole Trinity Valley area and responds to a tremendous amount of accidents on Highway two ninety-nine as well as Highway ninety-six, which is not in their jurisdiction, as we have heard this last week quite a bit. And so, you know, just important to recognize that in that area of northeastern Humboldt County, they're the only game in town is Kinnwa. And so it is crucially important to that community. And a substantial portion of that funding goes to that work on all of those highways and things like that. I don't have the percentages in front of me. Maybe somebody does. And the last comment I wanted to make is about the student resource officers. I, I really appreciate them. And I, I've been talking about the need, you know, to fill the McKinneville position, which has been unfilled for, for a number of years, funded but unfilled due to lack of enough deputies. And what the TAE personnel for the county probation, that transitional age youth, the TAE, folks say is that what they need is community resource officers, not student resource officers. In other words, they need people with expertise at working with students that aren't carrying a gun. And again, nothing personal or derogatory there, but the students, according to these folks that work with the students all the time, say that it would be far more effective to have a community resource officer working with the students in the community that doesn't carry a gun, that has other talents and abilities. And I was just thinking that if we were to change the position title in that way, we might actually be able to bring in even more personnel that don't qualify to be a, a gun-carrying officer, but have other resources that are more particular to that need. So just a thought there. And I appreciated Sheriff you mentioning the grant sources out there. I think that sounds awesome. If we could be going for some cops grant. Because then that frees this money up for, for other important things like roads and, and other things. So thank you for that.
Thank you Supervisor Madron. Did you have your head? Oh Supervisor Wilson?
Yeah, this is a question a little bit that's related to this, for the sheriff, I guess. This list in general is review. It's like a pre-COVID list, you know? And the perspective is in that vein. And I'm certain that next year's process will probably look substantially different than this. And in that, I see on there, number twenty-five, which is the College of the Redwoods CERT training or, you know, for, for that. And, and you know, now that we're using CERT quite a bit now, sorry, excuse me, but if, if this was something that we would, you know, in a, in a post-COVID nineteen world, would we be thinking more about these CERT programs or this kind of support for expanding CERT in this way? And, and this kind of goes to my, and I mean, I've talked about this before. It's like, I, I really do think there's, we need to set aside for smaller grants for these small things that, you know, have a lot of impact in, throughout the community. And so this is a seventy-nine hundred dollars request to basically do two courses with sixty participants, which I assume would expand our core of CERT members in our community and really sort of add to our resiliency. And I just kind of want to ask you, like, pre-COVID, post-COVID, how does this, this particular element, you know, what's your response to that?
Yeah, so the, the needs throughout the community, there's going to be a different priority when you come out of all this. And so I believe there's going to be a lot of different funding opportunities for things like CERT. CERT has been validated for many years. People have, have valued the need for CERTs, you know, inside of law enforcement and public safety in general. I think outside now, people are going to really, really see the value in this. And I think next CERT classes are going to be full. I think there's going to be funding opportunities like going through micro grants through Humboldt Area Foundation by having grant opportunities through maybe the Headwaters Fund. I think there's going to be a lot of funds out there that are going to prioritize these kind of community events or community wellness or disaster preparedness programs where we're going to rely on volunteers to, to really supply the resources that, that we need as a community. So, so I think that supply the resources that, that we need as a community. So, um, so I think that, you know, there's going to be a lot of opportunities here. And I think too, you know, we funded, uh, CERT through Homeland Security as well. Um, and so we're going to continue to do that. And, um, there's going to be, I think, a, a lot of opportunities. So making sure that Measure Z is a part of that. You know, I don't think we're going to need to cover that in the future. I honestly think that there's going to be other opportunities out there for CERT to get the funding we need as well as, you know, using our hazard mitigation funds, um, and utilizing that through, uh, the state and FEMA to say, listen, this is an area where we can expand and, um, to, to prepare for those future disasters. And, um, so I'm, I'm, I'm looking at those, uh, constantly evaluating those and then coming out of it. Yeah. Through our EOC to really, uh, corroborate, um, you know, the CERT effort throughout the county.
And I just have a follow-up question. Um, it's related to the fun, the fund request in here for, uh, from Public Works related to cleanup of illegal dumping and also kind of pre-COVID, post-COVID. I mean, I know that part of what makes people feel safe, which is actually a big part of what is safety in terms of like, we're really trying to reduce stress, uh, in people's lives. And I see, I get a lot of people who get pretty stressed out about garbage left around here, there in dump sites around, that it really is something that is, is a pretty big concern. And so from my perspective, I mean, I see, again, this is another one of these items in here. This is the kind of county-wide benefit. Is, you know, what's, I mean, I know you guys hear a lot about dumping and sort of the anxiety that it creates. I mean, do you feel like this might be a decent investment in terms of reducing anxiety, especially as we're coming out of a particularly anxiety ridden time right now?
Yeah. And I think it provides an answer to a problem, a community problem. Right now, when we have homeless cleanup or those kinds of things where we have community volunteers that want to go out and clean up an area, um, and it's been decimated by trash and, and, and syringe litter and, and all sorts of, of things that they want to clean up. This gives them that answer to the dumping question, you know, where does it go? Who's going to fund it? Uh, who's going to pay for this dumpster coming here? So that working with Public Works and there's several cleanup groups within the county that do spearhead these kind of efforts. And it is, it is, it is helpful and it does, it does alleviate that question. And like I said, that anxiety too, that people do have as far as, hey, we'd love to help, but who's going to pay for it? And, uh, the biggest expense in this is, is the dumping fees.
So I, I wanted to briefly, uh, touch back, and I know you're waiting Supervisor Bass. I wanted to touch back on that question of the, the additional funding streams that are out there and some of the items that are before us. And there, uh, number five is as high up on the list is the city of Eureka's police department's request. And part of that is a homeless, emergency homeless support services and training. And, and right now, there's a lot of money coming, uh, from the state in that regard. And I wondered if there's a way that we can, um, deal with that request through that funding stream. So just putting that out there, Supervisor Bass.
Can you hear me?
There you go.
There's a big truck going. So, um, the first thing I'll, I'll go for is my understanding, when we, um, our CSAC officers had a Zoom with the governor about a week and a half ago, what he said was forget everything he said in the budget. He's going back. He's basically breaking a lot of stuff back. So I, I wouldn't depend on a lot of what he said. I mean, it's not, he wasn't expecting things to go sideways like this. So it's a real question as to what is really going to be coming out for those dollars for the homelessness. Because we have to get through this first. So, and I can keep you posted on that. I had a question for Sheriff Hansel and then one for Connie. I know she's there. But, um, so Sheriff, you mentioned the additional funding and I'm looking at 211 and I just know that they have been, Jeanette's been really busy and evident on our emails and, and being engaged in the community. Do you think there'd be extra dollars given COVID and, um, the additional response that 211s have had to do? Do you think there might be some funding sources for them in that type of direction?
Yeah. So being 211s and nonprofits and is in existence for general questions, uh, that any community member might have in there. They are active in, in disasters as well, answering questions. But a lot of times it's the questions that get referred to our, our, our joint information center. And, um, so it's, it's, they aren't taking calls on our behalf. They're just offering a service that they already do. And, um, so it does. Uh, again, I think in this, in this instance, they are working throughout the states. And I think, it provides them leverage to ask for more funding through the states, um, and also through, uh, other grant opportunities, being a nonprofit that they can, they can go through sources and, and, uh, different funds and, and ask for those. Um, yeah. And, uh, so.
Okay. I just, I was, I was thinking that, but I hadn't, I hadn't seen anything.
Yeah. And so also, I mean, lines get blurred a little bit because, um, Jeanette also is, uh, is the co-ad leader. So, um, and so she, you know, for the volunteers and, and, uh, community, you know, um, through the disasters response. And so she's organizing a lot of community efforts. She would organize the information that, that we provide in our JIC to push out to, uh, community members. So it is, um, it is something that, you know, that she, it's a, it's a dual hat that she wears. And so I think sometimes it gets confused with 211 in her.
Okay. That makes sense. And then my other question is if Connie can, is, I thought, I, I saw her name. There she is. So, so for Connie, I was curious, um, you know, item 14 was the alcohol drug care services, waterfront recovery services. Um, and we, I think we all agree that it's really a hugely important thing in our community. And we've been waiting for the dollars to come down or for the drug medical to finally move forward. And I was wondering if Connie might have an update on, on that. And I haven't heard anything recently.
Connie, uh, do, if you're watching, I, I know I saw you there earlier.
Her name's still there.
I, I can tell that her mic is off now, so she should be on soon. Uh, where are you Connie?
And so I missed your question, Virginia. I'm really sorry.
No worries. Um, I was, uh, looking at item 14, you know, we're talking about the, um, Measure Z funding. And when it came down to waterfront recovery services and, you know, we know how, how much we need, um, those services here. Is there an update on the drug medical delivery system? Um, because my concern is if we don't include them somehow in here, are we then losing addiction services? Or what is it that you see happening on the horizon?
The state contracts couldn't come to the board on the 28th, um, for drug medical. And we plan on going, um, live July 1. And that's the latest news. So, um, I'm, I'm hopeful that we will move forward as of July 1. So.
July 1 would be perfect timing too with this. So, um,
Yes, it will.
All right. Thanks. That's, uh, what I wanted to know.
Something occurs to me with regard to the questions that were, were kind of floating around about potential funding streams, grants, loans, et cetera. Um, I know we already have a division of the, of the EOC that deals with business. Is there any way we could have like an offshoot? Or maybe it's happening already as part of planning, uh, to look at these kinds of funding streams for government services, um, to be kind of drilling into that as we're moving forward to this next phase of the, of the emergency. Now, ask that Sheriff that question.
Yeah. So economic development is working with our small businesses, business in general. Um, we are, um, the, the law enforcement chiefs and public safety agencies are getting together twice a week on a conference call and it's coming up in about 20 minutes. So, but those are the kind of things that we will be discussing and, um, and encouraging. We've already brought up the, uh, the COPS grants and, and those kinds of things. We understand that overall, it's going to be a pretty tight budget, probably this next year. So we're going to be looking for some alternate funding sources to, uh, to fund law enforcement in general.
Okay. So everybody's pretty much doing that all along anyway. Um, I, I would remind people again, if you are, uh, thinking of public comment on this item, we have three numbers for you instead of the two that were listed on the agenda. And Ryan will put those up, um, for us shortly. Um, but there you go. Yes. Uh, hold on one second. So we have.
He's fine. They don't need to see me. Hey.
Sorry, sorry, sorry Rex.
Every year for the last six years, we come down to, we, we, we have a Measure Z committee that vets the heck out of everything. I mean, they, and then we all talk about, we like this and this. And I'd, I'd love, you know, I've been fighting for roads for six years and roads was part of the original thing. And it just, I, 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 but so were sheriffs. So was fire. I mean, it's just, people wanted a deputy out in rural areas. And I, and, and, and that's what I heard. And I've, and I've, I've been pretty involved with the last two campaigns, most personally and financially and everything else. And I understand all this. But then when it comes down to basically, you know, slicing up the meat, we, we come up with these ideas of, well, can't they get this grant? Can't they get this grant? What I'm suggesting, and I, I, there's a lot of things on here I'd like to change, but I, I, I don't know, you know, the, the, the slim the, the pie down a little bit. And I don't know if we'd accomplish anything. We really need to look at everything in two weeks or three weeks after we approve this and start banging the doors down for grants or as soon as the COVID's after and go out and maybe help these guys, these smaller areas that don't have the money. And, and work with Humboldt County Office Education, like I was saying earlier, and talk about these grants and, and get some of this stuff instead of talking about it at meeting and posturing to stand up for people in, you know, in the, in our districts, which is what we're supposed to do. I fully understand that. But I think what we do in three months or two months, we get through the COVID, not weeks, months. We start looking and, and, and turning on the, go to the CIO staff, the, the Humboldt County Office Education, talk with our sheriff about what public safety grants are and, and get with Connie to make sure we're taking full utilization of all these grant monies that are out there. And do that rather than saying, I need this for this. Cause I, I, there's this, this wish list or request list or needs list that we have has trimmed down quite a bit from originally when people were wanting statutes for tourism to up their tax dollars and, and things like that. It has, it has got based down to pretty much public safety or pretty close to. So I think what we should do as ourselves is, is commit ourselves to following up on this and, and putting a ticker out there in three months. Okay. What can we do to help these people the next six months? So when they go to ask for this money, they don't have to ask for it because they're getting it through a grant, you know? And some of those COPS grants and stuff like that, I think are three-year grants, which gives you plenty of time to, uh, position yourself to, um, you know, risk, you know, because the rewards are school resource officers. School resource officers takes a lot of pressure off a regular patrol deputy or law enforcement person. They are now out checking on the delinquent during the summer. They're, they are, they can take care of juvenile calls at the park. They can do all these things. So the savings themselves offset at a lower, at a, you know, somewhat different rate. So I, I think we, I think we have to commit to that sometime or else we could argue every time this comes in front of us about shaving this and shaving that, because I know the Eureka programs are working. It doesn't seem like it when you look outside, but they, you know, they are working. Um, I think he's got a good relationship with our sheriff and a great relationship with DHHS. So I just don't know where we could slim stuff up, but it, it's just a thought that maybe we should be looking at this in three months about what we're doing next year, rather than the last six weeks or what it seems like.
Supervisor Wilson?
Thanks. Let me plug in here. Hold on a second. Thanks. I, I do want to reiterate my, my best, um, that we do look some allocation that really is specific to small grants that basically are able to really engage the public at that sort of pedestrian level a lot more. Um, on this, I really think that even if, even an allocation, even if we could set a policy that sets aside maybe even a hundred thousand dollars for 10 grants that are $10,000 or less require, that require at least like a, a 100% match for each one of those or something like that, that we would, um, have a lot of engagement, um, at that level with not a lot of investment. And, um, I think that that is something that, um, would be helpful, um, to kind of keep people involved. Uh, and, uh, really, yeah, I just, I just think it'd be very helpful. And I can see a lot of smaller things that people can be doing and, and, and we're seeing it on this list too, you know, whether it's, uh, whether it's supplies for cleanups, whether it's, um, uh, the CERT program, for instance, um, and, and it, if we have a, a requirement that it has a match to it, then that way that those community groups and those places have, uh, have buy-in and it brings in investment, uh, in that way. And so I don't know, I just, at some point I'd really like to have us set a policy on this. I keep advocating for it. Uh, and someday it might happen. I don't know.
Supervisor Bone?
You know, and Supervisor Wilson, I think that's a great idea. What I'd like to do since we already have a body in place that already has that functioning part of it and everything else is, is maybe we should look at that fund, which they already do. But maybe expand the Headwaters Fund because they already have a board. They already do that. Um, a hundred thousand dollars a year for your 10 grants. Um, let them kind of bring it back. And then that way we're not trying to find five more people to serve on the mini-grant program and all these other things. Cause the Headwaters Fund is there originally, you know, I, I still has to check in our office. That was, you know, 12 and a half or 13 million dollars for jobs. And it, it's kind of done like Measure Z and kind of, um, had, um, creep outside the lines. So maybe we could actually do that because you, some of that you're talking is, is about job retention, job, job creation and, and, and worker, DPE equipment. I would probably much more rather than buddy up the Measure Z waters, which are going to be dropping down. A hundred thousand doesn't seem much, but if we get down to the lower or whatever the case may be. So I, I think, I, I think basically use the car in the garage we have and use the Headwaters Fund. And then they, and let their board do that and, and let them do, you know, three mini-grants, three mini-grants a quarter. And, and so people, you know, so they're not overburdened with them all at once. And then they could actually, you know, do something like that. And I, I'd, I'd support working with you on that.
I like that idea too.
I'll ju, I'll jump in. I think, yeah, I think Rex and I can, um, have an ad hoc to try and figure out a policy by which we can leverage hopefully both Z and Headwaters and external funds to really pull something together in terms of, uh, public safety. You know, smaller grants that engage the public in this way. And I'll, I'll work with him over the next few months and see what we can pull together.
Sounds good. Okay. At this point I will, um, open it up to public comment and again, remind people that there are actually three numbers to call. And, and once you've called all those three numbers, so there's a call, then there's the, the, the conference line, and then there's the conference password. And, um, once you've done that, uh, you press star nine and that gets you in the queue to give public comment. And if you wouldn't mind, once we go out of, uh, of, uh, speaker view, Ryan, to just keep that up for another little while. And, um, but of course you can't do it, but you're also helping me get the call. So forget that. I hope people see this at this point. And, uh, 3462487799 is the number. The ID for the conferences, 829339668. And the password then is 163982. And after you've done all of that, you have to press star nine to get into the queue to speak. Thank you very much. Thanks, Ryan. So, uh, with that, uh, do we have any, uh, public comments at this point?
Still Ken Swatzke again. It looks like Mr. Mulder and myself are the two people who figured out how to do this, but.
Yeah, I know. I know that there are, uh, some people who wanted to talk today and I'm.
Yeah. Well, anyway, you, you know, whenever we can do it, I get it out there to help these people. Um, you know, I, I do numbers and I do math and, and in the private sector, especially like times like this, every single meeting you should be seeing the trends you have on your sales tax. I know you only get it once a month or something, but at least that often. And you should have the trends on your sales tax, your measure S tax, and your sales property tax all trending on an ongoing basis. That's how we make our decisions. Personally, I, I, I don't know who came up this with 1.6% estimated sales tax reduction for the state. I, I, I think it may be off by a decimal point there. I think you're looking closer to 16% possibly. Don't know. I do have that same Measure Z revenue and expenditure projections. And I, I just having a really hard time with any confidence at all that there's any accuracy whatsoever in those projections. Um, what whatsoever in those projections, um, due to the current circumstances. I, I do totally understand, I think 211, we should be, have a very strongly worded letter of support for them to help them. Grant land's going to go away for those who don't quite understand how that works. Uh, as things shrink down, the grants go away in all waves, shapes and forms. Uh, you're looking at according to this chart, assume percentage change in, in your, in your retirement cost of 11.8%. And that, that again dwindles down to nothing. Well, if the stock market starts reflecting what's actually happening out there and, and your, your purrs and your pars, of course, won't make up the difference. You're going to have unfunded mandates that are horrendous there. So I don't think this is realistic. I highly recommend that you start assessing this on a regular basis. I think that's what you should do as far as being fiscally responsible. But that's just coming from the private sector and how we do our business rather than apparently how the county does theirs. Um, I do understand, let me do clarification if I have a second here regarding the ambulance service. Yes, that was a one-year funding up there for the, in the, for the hoopla, working with that particular ambushers. Yes, we were supposed to have a district setup. Yes, it was supposed to include partial portion of Trinity County, which is also served by this. And I can't understand why that hadn't ever really been pushed. Other than I was told it wasn't going well and was too easy to just say, let's not do it. And that's apparently what happened. So good luck on that one. Anyway, thank you for my three minutes. Bye.
Thank you. And I know we have further public comments, so next caller, you're on Zoom. It's kind of old though. Uh, I see, um, Jeff Connor, who's the Chief of Police of Riedel. Jeff?
Good morning Supervisor Fennell, members of the board. Jeff Connor here from the Riedel Police Department. First off, I'd like to thank the committee. They have a very difficult job and, uh, they have been, uh, very consistent in the three years that I've participated in these meetings. We've always ranked in about the same place. However, this year, uh, due to a, a change in the way that things were done, we were left off the, the funding, uh, for measure Z. And what I'm referring to is last year, if a department didn't make a significant reduction in their proposal, they received a mandatory, um, drop of 40%. We accepted that, made up the difference out of our general fund. The proposals that are, were given this year were the same, so it wasn't like anybody else's, uh, you know, program couldn't, uh, couldn't be funded with assistance from the general fund and it helped to spread the pain a little bit. Um, there was a decision Sheriff Hansel mentioned briefly not to do that this year and consequently we've fallen off. We are the only law enforcement agency that wasn't funded, at least in part, although what we asked for was approximately 10% of, of what the other agencies asked for. Uh, you funded several other things, some of which, uh, do most, some or most of their work in Trinity County. Um, I think it only fair that, uh, Riedel Police Department be considered for funding out of measure Z and I'll turn it back to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Chief Connor. Uh, next, uh, speaker please.
Good morning, this is Tammy Trent, City Mayor Pro Tem for the City of Fortuna. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. Um, I do realize that the revenue coming to the county and the cities will be impacted by the Corona pandemic over the next, um, year or so. The City of Fortuna does not have the funding to fund our drug task force officer without cutting another position or services. This position is extremely important to the whole county. The drug task force officer has been doing great job getting a large amounts of drugs off the street. We have looked for grants for both the school resource officer and the drug task force officer, and there just hasn't not been any. Both of these positions are extremely important and they both serve the full county. Our, our school resource officer serves the whole ill river, uh, ill river valley, a whole lot of schools, and the drug task force officer serves the whole county. So what the City of Fortuna is asking is to, you know, hopefully you can please find a way to fund, um, this drug task force officer. And, um, thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Councilmember Trent. Um, do we have any further public comment? I believe we have two more at least.
Um, and Deborah Garns, Mayor, the City of, Deborah Garns, Mayor of the City of Riedel. And I would just, um, to, um, reiterate what Chief Connor said and also to say how important that position is to allow us to, uh, have our police officers out on the streets doing what they're supposed to be doing, policing and that the way it was done prior to now, where, um, there was a percentage situation, I think that that would be very helpful. I know that the other cities, the larger cities, uh, Eureka needs, um, what they asked for, but as we all are paying in, if we could in some way figure out a way that, well, that was already figured out until this year, um, to spread it just a little bit more because that position for Riedel is vitally important to us and we cannot fund it and our sales tax is, is the same as everyone else's as far as, uh, the governor's, um, orders. And so we also need help with, we already needed help and now we will need help even more because we are also at a greater loss with this, uh, pandemic situation. So I just wanted to thank you all for what you're doing. Thank the, uh, committee for what they did, but if there is a way that you can allocate this just a little bit, uh, stretch it out just a little bit more, that would be very, very, very gratefully, you know, great, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor Garns. Um, we have at least a couple of more comments. Next talker, I want to say next caller, I'm going back to my radio days, but anyhow, next talk.
All right, good morning Board of Supervisors, this is, uh, Captain Brian Stevens in the Eureka Police Department. I just want to take a moment to, uh, again, thank the committee, uh, for their work this year. I don't envy them and what they have to go through every year. And also want to thank the Board of Supervisors for, uh, the last five years of funding that we've received as City of Eureka as a part of our MIST operation and also now expanding it to our Parks and Waterfront Ranger and our uplift program. Um, as Supervisor Bone said, there's times you may look outside and you can't really see the effects that the program is having. But just for some numbers, uh, last year alone, we were able to take 74 people and put them into the, uh, waterfront treatment center. And those are warm handoffs, those are people that come to us and want assistance without this funding and our CSET team. Um, those would not have been people that have been able to probably find their way to that treatment and start that path of turning their lives around. We've partnered with Uplift Eureka and this has been a very promising program for us and for the City of Eureka, uh, through their housing program. Now that they've gotten heap funds, we were able to house 27 people in the last quarter of 2019. And, uh, we don't have our new numbers yet, we're working on a quarterly report right now. But also the partnerships that we've been able to build through measure Z funds, through the partnerships with CSET. You see those effects today because of the COVID-19 responses that we have to have, the issues we're having at Free Meal, um, trying to protect our most vulnerable population, the homeless and keep it from being the, the virus infestating our entire homeless population. It's our how workers, the positions that are funded by measure Z that are down there every day that have built their relationships with the homeless community, who are providing that resource and education and guidance for them. It's our CSET team, uh, we build an entire team around our MIST officer, around our Park Ranger. They all have the same common goals, uh, of promoting and this balanced approach to the homelessness and protecting the homeless and also trying to enforce the laws and ensure that our public and our community has safe places to be. Um, they're down there every day on the front lines right now, trying to educate, trying to get in the housing, trying to, uh, find those that are symptomatic and get them in the, pointing in the right direction to get treatment. Without measure Z funds, without those positions, uh, I think a lot we would be seeing in our homeless community in Eureka today would be a lot different. So again, I just want to reiterate, uh, we appreciate the funding, we appreciate the support from the community. Uh, you see, if you forgot the support letters that we submitted, um, it has an impact from the top to the bottom, from our business communities to some of our private, uh, residential areas near the Old Town District, who is feeling the effects of what CSET is able to do. And we're going to continue moving forward as everything changes. We look for new inventive, uh, ideas, new inventive ways to approach this very sensitive topic. And I think we'll continue to lead the way when it comes to that. And without this funding though, it'd be a completely different scenario in Eureka right now. So again, I appreciate the funding. I understand it's a tough decisions, uh, but we will continue to carry on our mission and make Eureka a better city for, uh, everyone. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Captain Stevens. Appreciate that. I understand that, um, that's the last of our public comment, but I would like to put the call out in case there is another, uh, public comment. Any further public comment?
Madam Chair, that's all I have.
Thank you very much, Ryan. I appreciate that, appreciate the public comment from everybody. Bring it back to the board. Um, any further discussion on this item? Um, well, I, since I'm, uh, here on the mic, I, I will just say, I, I, I found, uh, Mayor Garns and Chief Connor's, uh, comments very compelling. Uh, the City of Riedel has, uh, said, uh, 33,488 and we are talking about a remaining balance allocated of 103. Um, but I do also understand the whole concept of the drug task force officer, uh, for Fortuna. So I'm just wondering if there's any way that we can, uh, look at the, the breakdown of the funding and see if there's another way that we can, um, accomplish that goal. Alicia, any ideas?
I, in order to fund anything beyond the committee's recommendations, you would need to reduce down some of the funding that the committee is recommending to be allocated. Um, as has been detailed, uh, these projections are pre-COVID 1.9 and so, um, I anticipate that there will be some scaling back of revenue projections in the coming year. And so any anticipated over just this year in revenues or savings, um, would need to be held to, to provide us with a cushion to withstand the next fiscal year. Uh, so, so really the only way to accommodate that is to reduce current, um, funding recommendations.
So, um, just, I'm just wondering, and it's unfortunate that we don't have somebody, uh, from the City of Fortuna here right now. Um, I'm just wondering if there's a way that we would reverse the, and, and the sheriff had to go to, um, the school resource officer and the, uh, drug task force officer in terms of the priorities, I don't know. Um, or if we just. Yes, absolutely. Go ahead.
Um, yeah, I, I suggested that, but, but it comes down to is they want 300,000 and we're giving them 250 or 26, whatever the, the numbers are, I'm not looking at them right now. But I'm just saying it's, 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 you're, you're robbing Peter to pay Paul and they're still going to need the, they, they still need the both positions or, but both positions are important and I, and I have a feeling that, that, that they realize that too. And they also realize the restraints and constraints we're under and, um, what's going to happen. So I'd like to make a motion to, uh, um, accept the measure Z committees and staff's recommendations on, uh, funding for, uh, measure Z for 2021.
Second that motion.
Third.
And, and can I?
And that, before Supervisor Wilson, and, and that goes with a caveat that I have said in the last six years or five years, that the grants have gotten better, they've got more important, they're not as extreme and, and, and the definitions are better. And it's just like everything else. Um, our, our, our costs are going up, our salaries are going up, we're seeing that. But at the end of the day, is, if we can come as close, I'm, I'm as sad as anybody. I'd like somebody to take a year off and put the money towards roads, um, knowing that we got SP1 funds and some other things, but our, you know, I've, I've been beating the drum for roads forever. So I guess I'll just keep beating, but I just think knowing how much work and, and, you know, watching the meetings online and going to a few of the measures E meetings, none of this was taken very lightly and there was so much input, uh, the people that came, I don't want them to feel like they got aced out because I mean, those chambers were probably more full than a lot of our board meetings. So, um, I think the input was there and, and the effort, and I think at the end of the day, you need to applaud the measures E committee for how much work and effort they do put into this. And so that's kind of why I'm going to support their, uh, their suggestions.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yeah, as the seconder of the motion, I'd like to reiterate, um, or, you know, I guess, um, support what Supervisor Bone was saying in terms of the process. Again, you know, no one gets everything that they want from this at all, certainly. Um, yeah, I mean, we were, and, uh, I would say that in this year in particular, these projections are pre-COVID and so it's actually very unlikely, um, that we may hit the number as it is in here anyway, and there are going to be adjustments that might have to be made anyhow. So, um, uh, again, you know, we as a community voted to tax ourselves, um, and create a very, very transparent process by which we allocate those funds, probably one of the most transparent across in the state, um, if not anywhere in terms of local taxing. And, um, so I, and so for me, it's, it's robust in that way, even if it's not everything I would want to do in the way I'd want to do it. So, um, uh, I support the second on this and I think next year is going to be, that we're going to be looking through everything, including this through very different lenses. And, uh, and I'm hoping that, um, we can make those adjustments and I look forward to working with Supervisor Bone on the idea of how to create some smaller, uh, more, uh, community level grant process or allocation process for this. So that's my second.
Uh, thank you Supervisor Wilson, Supervisor Madrona, and then Supervisor Bass.
Thank you Chair. Um, yeah, I support the motion. Um, I also appreciate the hard work of staff and the measure Z committee, and I agree with Supervisor Bone that these things are tough, it's been all pretty vetted, uh, and I'm not inclined to want to switch that around. Um, I do look forward to the work that Supervisor Wilson and Bone are going to do in the small grant arena. I think if we were to take a quarter million of this, you know, three to 5% of the total pot to say, let's put that into small grants, we could fund another 20 projects that for them, 20 grand could mean the world to them in terms of leveraging lots of other resources and making things happen. So, uh, and because, you know, we tend to, uh, put out some really big, uh, grants in this discretionary fund, there seems to not be anything left for the small, small stuff. So, uh, again, appreciate all the work, I support the motion as it is. I guess maybe we'll handle the two other issues or some of the other pieces of staff recommendation in a separate motion, such as, uh, the carryover money, which I support staff's recommendation there, not that it's part of the motion yet. Um, and then also the working group recommendations to try and keep, uh, keep the money in line to maintain a substantial discretionary pot. Thank you.
Uh, so Supervisor Bass?
Thank you Madam Chair. I, I was just curious, uh, one of the, my questions with the motion was, was it basically a motion for all of staff recommendations or are we just taking this one at a time? And then secondly, do we need, um, official language in there creating the ad hoc committee? And I wasn't sure if I heard anything official in the motion for that. That's it.
Uh, maybe the C O can weigh in on this? C O Nielsen, are you there?
As, uh, just as the seconder of the motion, I was assuming that I was, uh, in support of all of the staff recommendations.
Staff recommendations, what about the question regarding the ad hoc?
Right.
Or is that an ad hoc committee? Um, C O Nielsen?
It would be helpful if the ad hoc committee was included in the recommendation. So it's just clear to staff what your board is working on.
So then can that be accomplished with the maker of the motion?
Please. Well, as the seconder, I, I support that change.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, go for it. I just, yeah. Okay. Hey, sorry. Yeah, I support it. You didn't change that much.
Okay, so were there any other discussion on this? I, you know, Supervisor Bone said, you know, we all have areas of our district, people who are concerned about funding for all of the work that they do. We have really relied a lot on the cleanup funding every year to deal with illegal dumping that Supervisor Wilson mentioned. That's been a very core issue for a lot of the outlying areas that don't have anyone to pick up the trash. And then, secondly, I I feel very strongly that some of the smaller requests, I feel badly about the fact that they are not going to get funding. So I personally, and I would hope that all of my colleagues will work on other avenues where we can find funding for them. And I'm thinking not only the Headwaters Fund, but I'm going to have an eye on Measure S as well. Because I do know that those revenues have been coming in, and we'll talk with the CIO with regard to how we could potentially find funding for some of those smaller requests especially. And then I just want to take to get my understanding of the staff recommendation then that the remaining balance would be allocated to the to item number seven in the list of priorities. Is that correct?
Ten-four.
Ten-four. Okay, all righty. So any further discussion, Ryan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So my my understanding of the motion is that we're we're accepting staff recommendations, we're accepting the Measures E Committee's recommendations, and we're forming an ad hoc of Supervisor Bone and Supervisor Wilson for grant funds for smaller businesses.
Not businesses, smaller, smaller organizations.
Organizations. Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Groups.
Yeah. Groups. Okay.
I mean.
No, I have a, it just occurred to me with regard to the ad hoc that we're talking about. Supervisor Wilson is on the Headwaters Fund Committee anyway, correct?
Yes, but that's just to choose people who sit on the board. I don't think we don't have any. Yeah, I don't have it. There's no policy input there.
I sat on it for three.
You should got a name. Yeah, okay. CIO Nielsen. You were you looked as if you wanted to say something.
Yes, I wanted also there to be some additional clarification to the motion, because what I also thought I heard was that the hundred and three, nine hundred and thirty-five thousand should also be applied to the City of Fortuna's Drug Task Force agent. Application number seven.
Yes. Number seven, yes. And I believe that the makers nodded their heads on that one.
That was the recommendation I got just to follow down.
Yeah, yeah, great. Thank you. Okay, so with that, Ryan, we'll go to our roll call.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll start with the roll vote. Supervisor Fennell?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Affirmative.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
Ten-four.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Passes five oh.
Thank you. So CIO Nielsen, we have a time certain at noon. Do you think we can get the next board agenda item through in fifteen minutes? I don't think so, but maybe you know more than I do on that.
I think that depends on how frequently your board is going to ask questions.
Okay, so so that is a resolution related to updated employee procedures and leave accruals. So what I would do now then is not adjourned, but we will leave this meeting and go into our closed session. Do we want to come back here at noon to discuss, and this would be for Council Billingsley, do we want to come back here at noon to say what's in the closed session, or can we announce it now and then come back into the closed session at noon?
Chair Fennell, it's set for a time certain, so we'll have to announce it at twelve and take comment then.
Okay, so what I'm going to do, and I invite all of you, Supervisor Madron, go ahead.
I would just suggest, let's just do this. I think we can get this done in fifteen minutes, and for the public's sake, they're here now. Let's just do it. Let's get it done. And if we don't get it completely done, at least the presentation has occurred so that we can streamline how things go after our closed session at noon. That's my suggestion.
Well, I'm fine with that if CIO thinks we can do it, or if we have to come back after closed session. So that's fine. So CIO Nielsen, let's go to item number H three then, resolution relating to updated employee procedures and leave accruals in response to COVID.
Okay, so today, we bring your board an update to employee procedures and leave accruals in response to COVID nineteen and the Families First Coronavirus Response Act. Under certain MOUs with bargaining units, employees cannot continue to accrue time off indefinitely. And in the case of those staff that are working in the Emergency Response Center or the JIC, they're not able to take time off because we are in the middle of an emergency, and so staff recommends lifting that leave benefit accrued leave cap, so staff can continue to accrue time off. In addition, some MOUs include a wellness of thousand-dollar wellness benefit reimbursement. And many of those reimbursable services have been used for gym membership, and right now gyms are closed, so we'd like to be able to offer staff the ability to extend that thousand-dollar wellness benefit passed June thirtieth, twenty twenty. In addition, there are also time limits on the use or lose holiday pay and paid administratively for management confidential staff. So we'd also like to lift the time limits on that for staff as well. In addition, we would also like to recommend a five percent emergency response pay premium to those that are working in the Emergency Operations Center, the Joint Information Center, and in many of the county departments where essential services are requiring folks to be on the front lines, particularly if they're working with the public, such as a social worker in child welfare or adult protective services. So we'd like to recommend that five percent increase. In addition, I'd also like to make a change to the resolution, like to make a recommendation to change something in the resolution, item number two. The second to last sentence, it says, if an employee currently receives hazard pay under any applicable memorandum of understanding, they may not, they may elect to receive either hazard or emergency response pay, but not both. I'd like to recommend to your board that we remove that sentence. Currently, in the ASME MOU, those staff that work in locked facilities, such as Semper Virims, the correctional facility, and Juvenile Hall, they already receive hazard pay pre-COVID nineteen. So we'd like them to also receive this emergency response pay as well as their hazard pay that was already included in their MOU. So I'd like to make that additional recommendation to your board for that modification. Moving on, we also, the Families First Coronavirus Response Act came into effect April first, and this requires an employer to give an additional eighty hours of sick time to employees. So we'd also like to make that recommendation to provide the eighty hours of sick leave to employees. Back on March sixteenth, your board advanced eighty hours of sick leave to all employees. During the month, and we also turned off the leave accrual at that point, we advanced the sick leave, and then we turned off the sick leave accrual. What we'd like to do is turn back on the sick leave accrual and give that eighty hours as an additional sick leave time. Because during the month of March, some county departments directed employees to stay away from the workplace, and either because they were deemed nonessential, or there might have been a need to clean a county facility. And so we'd like to be able to give that benefit time to to staff. So everybody is made whole at this point in time. And so that is a brief summary of the recommendations that are contained in the staff report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, take it back to the board. Any questions for CIO Nielsen? Supervisor Bone?
Yeah, on the on the eighty hours accrued, so what we're talking about is given, let me clarify this. So if somebody's working in the JIC, or they're considered essential, or they're having to work, so they will get a hundred and sixty hours that they can use after this is all over in any way they want to cash it out.
So there is. So, okay, so by law, we have to give eighty hours under the coronavirus Families First Act. And right now, the benefit leave accruals are opened up for people to use. So however, sick leave cannot be paid out unless you were employed with the county prior to nineteen ninety-three. Don't quote me on that. However, sick leave can upon departure can be turned into service credit with helpers. And so we do talk about that in the financial impact section of the agenda item. Because there could be, there is an additional cost if staff choose not to use this time.
And then, and that's in addition to the five percent hazard pay we're giving them to also, right?
Five percent emergency response pay, and yes, and hopefully some of this will be reimbursable through the Office of Emergency Services, because this is in response an emergency.
Hopefully that seventy-five percent, but we know how they are. Okay, I just.
Thank you, Supervisor Bone. Anybody else have questions for the CIO? Supervisor Wilson?
I don't have any questions other than, you know, thank the CIO for going over this stuff with us all individually. And I'm willing to make a motion to move forward with staff recommendations, including the change, the recommended change to item two.
Do you have a second for that motion? We have a motion and a second. Supervisor Madron?
I'll just second in the motion.
Oh, yeah, thank you. So Supervisor Bone?
Well, I think everybody on the board's appreciative, very appreciative, everybody that is showing up to work and getting through this. I I know there's some glitches in in some of the offices, because we get the emails and stuff. For the people working at home, I guess they're having trouble getting a hold of people in their offices and stuff, but this is a new and exciting time for us. So it's pretty it's pretty hard for us to figure out. But I think I myself are very appreciative with everybody that's trying to keep this going as much as possible, and trying to keep us functioning, keep the bills paid, and keep our citizens safe and their needs met. So I think I really appreciate everybody that's been doing that.
Yeah, I I would tell you, I've been asked by a lot of people, how are we managing this? And what I hear from everyone I talk to, and that includes officials from other agencies to the cities. It seems almost as if you just double the work. It just is pretty much non-stuff. And I I know that it can be trying for people, especially if they've got kids they're taking care of, as well as working from home and and doing all of these things. And then, you know, we have to remember, we talk about health health workers and healthcare workers. At this point, a lot of people are healthcare workers, including clerks in the stores, to tell you the truth. But definitely the people cleaning all of the office buildings, people doing all of that work, we're all working to keep the county healthy. So I think that this is an important step to take. I really, really appreciate CIO working with the department heads and the unions to make sure that employees' needs are met. I, since we don't have any further discussion, I do need to open this up for public comment. Is there anybody who's got a comment on this item? Do you see anybody with their hands up, Ryan?
Estelle, I've been unmuted here. I only have one question through the chair, if you can hear me.
Thank you.
Is with the with the change in item number two, what is the total financial impact of the measure you're passing today? If you could ask your CEO to answer that question, I'd be happy to hear that number. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further public comment on this item?
There is no comment.
Thank you. CIO Nielsen, do you have an answer for that question? Or is that possible to have an answer? Item number two.
Yeah, it doesn't actually, we didn't remove the staff working in the correctional facility, Juvenile Hall, or Semper Virims from our estimate, so the estimate actually remains the same.
Okay, great. Thank you. So we have a motion and a second, and Ryan will go to our roll call. Vote again, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll do a roll call vote, starting with Supervisor Fennell.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
Ten-four.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Passes five oh.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you very much for that. So we are now we're now going to go into a closed session, so I'll ask Council Billingsley to get us up to speed on that one.
Chair, just to be a stickler, can we wait one minute and I'll announce it?
Thank you. So at this point, we're going to leave the meeting, and you can all actually leave it. And then we will go into the closed session, and you have the link provided to you by.
Chair, no, no one should leave the meeting right now. We still need to take the public comment.
Oh, sorry. Thank you so much. Thank you. I really appreciate that. My my audio changed in the middle of what you were saying. So, yeah, please, public comment on this item?
Chair, just let let me read the item into the record.
Oh, go ahead. Sorry.
It's the intention of the board to meet in closed session on three items. The first two are conference with legal counsel pursuant to government code five four nine five six point nine D one. The first is Lehman versus County of Humboldt, CV two thousand two hundred. The second is Blank versus County of Humboldt, case number one nineteen, CB three zero five five. And the third item is to consider a public employee performance evaluation for the position of county council pursuant to government code five four nine five seven. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Billingsley. I'll get better at this. What happens is when my AirPods loses power, it just goes back to the computer. So there was a little transition there. Is there any public comment on this?
Estelle, I'm right here to the bitter end, aren't I? So there we go. Have a good closed session. Again, you are addressing the public employee performance valuation for the for the position of county council. I assume that's Jeffrey Blank and not your interim county council. You also have another case going there. I think all of you have received some documentation from the judge. If you can't take it directly from him, put two and two together and read between the lines, and I think you'll have an indication of where this is going. So I recommend you evaluate him. He's staying at home, cashing his paychecks, I assume. It's been, what, thirteen months, fourteen months now? Highly recommend you settle this. We need every penny we can. We're paying double the cost for county council we should be paying. And, you know, just as far as being fiscally responsible, that's something that should be wound up and wound down through some kind of settlement process. All I can see happening is that most likely, the judge will go ahead and say that those who've already taken a depot will do it again, have do-overs. They'll have other depositions lined up, and I think the fruition of this thing, although some people think I'm backing the wrong horse here, I'm going to stay on this horse right to the end, and if I get thrown off or end up on a dead horse, then that's my my problem and not yours. My gut feel is there's there's no there there with Jeffrey, and the court will rule in his favor. Please settle this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there any further public comment on this item?
Hello, Thomas Mulder here again. I'm commenting on items, I believe, two and three. I just want to remind you, County Council Blank, when, uh, he was still active and at the dais there with the re- rest of the board of supervisors, he. Was on Kmod and other, other media platforms speaking to against the cannabis industries claiming that. We have never paid taxes, which was a lie and untruthful. So I want you to think about that and take that into consideration as you guys are deliberating possibly that person's performance or reasons to let them go legally. Um, that's not biased. That would be an attack on the industry and speaking mistruth. So, uh, hopefully you have a good deliberation and. Thank you for allowing us to participate.
Thank you, Thomas. Thank you, Ken. And so, um, at this stage, we're going to go into a closed session. So again, uh, technically you guys can leave the meeting. The late meeting will, uh, continue, but you will join the meeting that was hosted by, uh, with your other invitation. Excellent.
Good. Uh, one, one sec.
Great. So we're back in session out of a closed session. Anything to report out, Council Billingsley?
Chair Fennel, there's no reportable action on the three items today.
Thank you very much. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.